They're giving me the go ahead when we're ready. Do you guys please mute the line in the executive director's conference room? Thank you.
Madam Chair, you can go ahead and begin and open the meeting.
Thank you so very much. Good afternoon. My name is Dionne Bussey Reader. I'm the chairperson of the D.C. Housing Authority. This is our monthly meeting that we will begin now at 1:05 PM. We are on a virtual platform. I'm going to ask that we all respect respectfully mute your lines if you're not talking. Understand that this is a Board of Commissioner meetings and we will respect each other as we speak. We will not have any loud outbursts, name-calling, or any other rude behavior during this presentation. We will give as normal our residents an opportunity to testify and our non-residents will get an opportunity to testify as well. We have a couple of things on the agenda and we will get started. Want to ensure that we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll do a roll call vote, a roll call, I'm sorry, for quorum. Commissioner Council. Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio. Commissioner, I didn't hear a response. Let the record reflect Commissioner Fauchekio was present. Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman. I didn't hear you, Commissioner Hoffman.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz-Gao.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland. Commissioner Strickland, I didn't hear you.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Talafaro. Commissioner Van Gostrey. Commissioner Van Gostrey. I heard you, Commissioner Strickland. Thank you. And Chairman Bussey Reader.
Present.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have ten commissioners present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. We're going to move to the approval of the minutes. I'm hoping all of you had an opportunity to review the minutes. Do you guys have any changes to the minutes as stated?
Yes, I do. Commissioner Hoffman.
Please proceed with your change.
I believe it was on page 146 or thereabouts. There are two paragraphs in a row attributed to Director Donald. The second one and all that follows it should be Ms. Bishop. The page numbering has changed since I read this.
Noted. I'll make sure that's changed.
You.
Commissioner Fauchekio.
The line decrease is perfect for it. The text then relates to.
Can't hear you, sir. Still can't hear you. Do you have a change to the minutes? If you can actually put it in the chat. I'm assuming that's where you were because we can't hear you. I think Commissioner Fauchekio is going to try to log back in. Unfortunately, Alethea, how will we be able to receive his changes to the minutes? If he's not able to share it before we vote? How do we do that?
There you go.
All right, you're back.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. I'm very embarrassed. I was just actually trying to be more present. No change to the minutes. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Are there any other changes to the minutes? I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the minute as amended by Commissioner Hoffman.
Second? Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Alethea.
Just all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving forward, we have one resolution on the table. I'm going to turn it over to our executive director, Director Donald. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners, and members of the public. I know there are a number of people lined up to speak on this resolution, but the resolution before the board is for the approval of the Greenleaf Revitalization Plan. Madam Chair, do we then go to the witnesses? I'm sorry, in terms of the process?
Yes, I'm assuming that that is correct. Alethea, we go through the witnesses and then we'll move on to the resolution, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have several residents and non-residents that have signed up for to comment on the Greenleaf Resolution that's before you. We can start with the we can start with the residents who will have five minutes to speak and then going into our non-residents for three minutes. Would you like for me to begin the list?
Yes, before you, yep, before you begin, let me share with you all the residents. First of all, thank you all again, as usual, for taking out the time to state your concern about your residents. I just want to be clear, there's quite a few people that have signed up to testify. So we're going to stick closely to our time restraints. So please, I'm asking you to please make sure that you get all of your comments in with the time allotted. Residents have five minutes, non-residents have three minutes. So we're going to stick closely to that today. Thank you. Alethea, you can proceed with the first witness.
The first resident testimony is from Linda Brown. Just Ms. Brown.
Could you tell us how many people are on the list to testify?
Eighteen for the resolution.
Total?
Total.
Thank you.
Yes. Is Ms. Brown available? Okay, I'll move on. Donna Chester. Ms. Chester. I'll keep going. Pamela Collins. Pamela Collins, okay. Joan Williams.
Yes. Good afternoon, you all.
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Joan Williams. I'm a resident at Greenleaf Senior Building.
Please proceed, you have a minute.
I'm sorry?
Please proceed. Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, many of our seniors are having a hard time trusting this process. You guys are asking us to move forward. Are you telling us you're moving forward? However, what are we moving forward to? One, the residents' needs and interests are not being met, nor do they have a resolution we can even speak on or feel comfortable with. We've been told so many different things. It also affects the mental well-being of our seniors, causing unnecessary stress to their already existing health conditions. Our seniors don't have ten to twenty years to wait for you guys to decide what you all are going to do. Because, you know, many of our seniors are suffering from some sort of disability. They're worried about their fate. And if availability of these services are even going to be, you know, convenient to them as they are now. And as I stated before, it affects their mental health and well-being. Hello?
Thank you.
Ms. Williams, are you finished with your testimony?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so very much for testifying. Well, thank you. We appreciate your comment.
Next is Ms. Patricia Bishop. Ms. Bishop, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Good afternoon, everyone. Exactly to reiterate on what the senior that lives in 1200 saying. This is what I kept saying all the long time. We don't have any direct information of what's going on. We've been told bits and pieces over and over and over. That's why I said, let's start this over. Let's get in some good trouble because this miscommunication and not being clear of what is going on with our lives here, we're not going to accept it at all. We might talk, but still questions need to get answered. We need things, as I talked to Andre Broll yesterday. We need things in black and white so that when we go back to the tenants, we can be absolutely clear. And letting them know what we're doing, what y'all are saying, what we agree and what we disagree to. And how to proceed with this in a better way.
You finished with your testimony, Ms. Bishop?
I had to pause because I'm still trying to keep my sanity and remain respectful up in here. The bill first. When y'all send Zeros copies out to everybody and it's really not including what the decision on this resolution to be made with us to the tenants before, a day before, they're saying that this is only about 1200. We should have had all of this in black and white. That's why we keep asking. Come to the table with us. Let us know everything that's going on and let us be the main leaders to make these decisions along with y'all. That's what I'm talking about, getting in good trouble. It's always the right time to do what's right. So that none of this will be a repeat of the same old, same old with anybody being displaced, misunderstood, stressed out, heart attacks, health problems while we are still living here. And I just want to reiterate. I got a good soul and a good heart and I'm about the people in the fight. I'm not against anyone but just hearing understand us. We are not here for the same old, same old. We're trying to better it for us as well as the board, well as HUD. And let's all be honest that this wasn't the right way to do it. I was so confused behind the meetings and the questions and stuff that went on yesterday. It was not good. We understand what's going on. We might agree to some, but the most important thing to agree with is the miscommunication. Thank you very much.
Ms. Bishop, and happy belated birthday again to you. We're going to bring some clarity to some of your concerns today. Thank you. You can move forward.
Next, we have some non-residents that have signed up on the resolution. We can start with Chris Williams. Mr. Williams, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have three minutes.
Okay, I'm in the middle of teaching, so I had to step out. Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the resolution regarding Greenleaf. As you may be aware, I'm the editor-in-chief of the Southwest Voice. I know that Director Donald, as well as DCHA staff, have read our most recent issue that includes public statements by Greenleaf leaders asking that not only Bill First be put back on the table, but that we align this project with racial equity mandates. And I understand that there may have been some developments since the publication of our issue in which we highlight the betrayal of the Housing Authority against residents and removing Bill First. I understand that there is ongoing discussion of Bill First as well as a commitment to a recommitment, rather, to residents. But residents should be cautious and the public should be cautious about assurances at this stage to do better. Because executive directors from Mrs. Taubman to the current director tend to use that as a way to get residents on board when they've messed up. We'll do better. We'll do better. And what we need is for the Housing Authority to do better. And what that means is being honest with residents about the process, allowing their effective engagement with these development plans. We know that the Resident Advisory Board that was formed for Greenleaf largely consisted of residents outside of the Greenleaf community. That should not be the case. We also know that there are salient legal and political issues related to the Greenleaf procurement process. And my newspaper has done a good job of keeping track of those issues. And so the board should not endorse this resolution given the salient legal issues and including the allegations of the whistleblower who is or was a staff member at the Housing Authority. Say no to this resolution. I also understand that maybe this resolution now is only limited to Greenleaf Senior. I'm not sure how the public is to know that because the reading of the resolution, at least when I read it two days ago, encompassed the entire property. So again, the board should say no to this. It is time for the board to exercise its fiduciary responsibility. Not only is the Housing Authority not compliant with the Moving to Work provision on substantially the same requirement, but it's suspected to not be compliant with the family housing requirements for the MTW requirements. So it's either that the Housing Authority Board realizes that it needs to take its mission seriously, or the investigation will make it accountable. So you choose, but I encourage you to say no.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next on our list, Daniel Del Pelago.
Thank you, Ms. McNair.
Thank you, sir. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Del Pelago and I work with Empower DC. Several of our members live at Greenleaf and we've worked with the community for years now. Here we are again on the precipice of another development that will succeed in confusing and displacing residents and leaving little hope that promises made or goals laid out will ever become a reality for Greenleaf residents. At the recent February DevMod Committee Meeting, I guess that stands for Development and Modernization Committee Meeting of this board, there was an exchange captured in the minutes of the meeting that I think is emblematic of the issues that continue to plague this authority and its so-called redevelopments, which is not listening to what residents have to say. Commissioner Skinner asked Penrose Representative, Penrose is part of the development team, Ivy Dench Carter asked, Mr. Skinner asked if there was support from the residents for this project, to which Ms. Carter responds, resident engagement is challenging when there is a perception that their lives will be disrupted. Let's be clear, this looming redevelopment has already disrupted Greenleaf residents' lives and will continue to do so. This is not a perception, but a reality. I'm also troubled that this is an excuse to not do any real resident engagement. It sounds more like we tried, but they don't want to listen. This mistrust is further exacerbated when the authority takes actions like reneging on the promise and understanding that residents have had for a good while now that there will be a Bill First component. Anyone that follows the antics of this Housing Authority could have made a very accurate educated guess that you all would not deliver on this promise, as you have not delivered on that promise at Park Morton or Berry Farm, which once again underscores that resident voices do not matter in this or any of the redevelopment of DCHA properties. Over the past week, I've spoken to many Greenleaf residents. They are angry, they're confused and disillusioned that their ideas and voices don't matter in any of this process. I also want to remind this board that the D.C. Comprehensive Plan says that any redevelopment of public housing must build replacement affordable units first prior to any off-site physical relocation, or if site constraints required, provide appropriate off-site affordable units as a new permanent housing within the same neighborhood. Lastly, I want to reiterate a point that I've made to this board previously. You are about to potentially put something into play that there is no return from, especially for Greenleaf residents. One of your next steps will likely be to submit a demolition disposition application to HUD. If approved, your responsibility is to rehouse these residents, not to redevelop, not to bring them back to the property, but to find them housing through a voucher or at another DCH property. I urge you to vote no on this resolution. It will certainly lead to displacement and upheaval if resident voice and input aren't central to any next steps. You want proof? Just ask the residents of Berry Farm. Still waiting to find out when they'll come back. And that's easy because many of them were relocated to Greenleaf when they were displaced from their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker we have is William Jordan. Mr. Jordan.
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. My name is William Jordan. I've been working with Ms. Shante High at Park Morton. And I wanted to testify on this Greenleaf based on my experiences at Park Morton, but also in the redevelopment of my neighborhood on 14th Street. So the first thing I wanted to do is give you a definition. Flim flam. Nonsensical or insincere talk. Swindle someone with a confidence game. And you say, use it in a sentence. The tribe was flim flam out of its land. And that's exactly what we're dealing with here today. And I'm going to read through the logic. Resolution 1901. The executive director can take all necessary steps in accordance with Resolution 1901 with respect to all units which DCHA has determined that extreme urgent action is required. Right? Then we go, three years later, this is extreme urgent action, we get Resolution 2211. And if you read 2211, Phase 1, start in 2023. That's seven years from the beginning, right? Because in 2023, then it takes two years to develop the units, right? So 2025, the first residents go into the new units. Phase 2, 2025, start. So 27, nine years from the start, residents move in. Phase 3, 2028. So in 2030, residents move in. Next phase, 2030. 2032, residents move in. Last phase, 2032, residents move in in 2034, 15 years later. And this is supposedly determined that urgently, extremely urgent action is required. So 15 years later, is urgent action, that is a flim flam, right? And so to move forward with this is absolute nonsense. The board can't do it. And working with the resident council at Park Morton, the executive director doesn't negotiate in good faith and is actually undertaking COINTELPRO-type action at Park Morton as we speak. So this board has to put its foot down, throw this flim flam out. There's no way that you can tell me urgent action takes 15 years. That is flim flam. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Next, we have Zachary Curtis. Mr. Curtis on the line. I'll move on. Ellen Nelson.
Ms. Nelson? Yes, I'm here. I have to say, well, first of all, I'm Ellen Nelson. I am a member of WIN. I'm really speaking for myself right now. I've been involved in working with several different public housing sites and really helping the residents sort of regain their right and being up on rad. I was really concerned about Greenleaf and what's happened because, first of all, it was published and it's been known that the construction companies did not have a Build First and we're not going to have it. And that's why I signed up to testify. As of this morning, a colleague called me and said, oh, we've been contacted by the DCHA and there is going to be a Build First. This is really terribly disconcerting because it doesn't sound like the Greenleaf was spoken to. Many of the other people didn't know this. It's a continuous thing of misinformation or a great gap. I also have questions about the project that even though the housing would be replaced in equal numbers, 700 market rate units. Why are they not considering more affordable units? And also some home ownership units. I just, at the moment, really question whether we should go forward with this. I also want to agree certainly with Mr. Del Pielato that his comments were very apt with mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ruby Steigerwald.
Hi, thanks. I'm Ruby Steigerwald and I live in Ward 5. When I was thinking about the issue of displacing the residents of Greenleaf in order to create a healthier living environment, I thought, no way, DCHA can't be doing this again. But then I thought, I wonder if in some way DCHA is following its own mission by doing this. So I went on the website and here's what the DCHA website says. "The District of Columbia Housing Authority provides quality affordable housing to extremely low through moderate income households, fosters sustainable communities, and cultivates opportunities for residents to improve their lives." And this statement is followed by five strategic goals. So I thought I would look at those goals and see if displacing residents of Greenleaf accomplishes any of the goals. The first goal is to create opportunities to improve the quality of life for DCHA residents through collaboration and partnership. How does displacing residents improve their quality of life and what does collaboration mean to DCHA? I thought it meant listening to people you're working with, trying to find solutions that all parties can agree to, and sticking to what you say you're going to do. DCHA told Greenleaf residents that Build First was a requirement in the RFP. It was even supported in the comp plan. But now I hear that they're planning to displace residents. How is that improving people's quality of life and how is that collaborative? Second strategic goal, increase access to quality affordable housing. If you kick people out of their affordable housing, you're denying them access, not increasing access. Number three, provide livable housing to support healthy and sustainable communities. You're taking away housing. You're not supporting a healthy and sustainable community. You're destroying it. You're breaking it apart by sending people away. Providing housing choice vouchers is not a viable solution for many of the residents and it does not sustain the community. Residents who take the vouchers are dispersed to different neighborhoods and community is lost. Fourth goal, foster collaborative work environment that's outcome-driven and meets highest expectations of the affordable housing industry. Collaborative work environment. Folks thought they'd been heard when Build First was promised, but then what happened? Did DCHA forget what was said? Did DCHA forget why it's important to Build First? Highest expectations ought to include providing safe and livable spaces and respecting the residents, respecting their wisdom and listening to lived experience, not saying one thing and then when it's convenient, ignoring residents and doing the opposite. Fifth, effectively communicate DCHA's accomplishment and advocate for its mission. Well, this action will effectively communicate that DCHA once again displaces residents of public. Well, this action will effectively communicate that DCHA once again displaces residents of public housing. If that happens, they can pat themselves on the back because that is clearly the goal. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Coy McKinney.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, so hi, my name is Coy McKinney. I've been a Southwest resident since two thousand and ten. I'm asking the board to vote no on the proposed plan for redevelopment of Greenleaf and to require any future development fulfill the promise of build first. As long as I've lived in Southwest, the redevelopment of Greenleaf has been synonymous with build first due to the organizing efforts of public housing residents, Southwest residents and other advocates throughout the city. I view build felt, build first as essential given the housing authority's previous unsuccessful attempts at preventing displacement when redeveloping other public housing complexes. Moreover, tens of thousands of Black Washingtonians have already been displaced over the last two decades. The city cannot continue to actively participate in the displacement of its own Black citizens. Therefore, build first, a strategy specifically aimed at preventing displacement, must remain on the table. Since I've lived in DC, the government has continued to neglect the needs of the historically and intentionally underserved and instead has chosen to cater to predominantly affluent and white newcomers. The mayor's own housing equity report from twenty nineteen stated that, quote, "Housing production has consisted of mostly small rental units targeted to households earning more than a hundred twenty percent of the area median income," end quote, which are people earning more than double the median household income of Black families in DC. Southwest and Navy Yard are a perfect example of this as they have been bombarded with market rate housing. Since the mayor announced her housing goals at the beginning of twenty nineteen, Southwest and Navy Yard have added nearly five thousand units, but only three percent of those units have been quote unquote affordable. Consequently, the Black population has declined twenty percent in Southwest. The median sales price for homes has increased fifty five percent and the median income of residents has increased a hundred and seventeen percent. In short, it's been gentrification and displacement. During this time period, vital pieces of public land were given to private developers for nearly nothing. If the city is serious about its commitment to racial justice, then at a minimum, build first must be included in the redevelopment of Greenleaf Gardens. I would also recommend looking into alternative housing models such as community land trusts, social housing and limited equity housing cooperatives to provide residents with an opportunity to actually own their units and achieve equity as well. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Uh, next on the list is Lydia Curtis.
Thank you. I am Lydia Curtis and I am a thirty-five-year resident of Washington DC and a taxpayer. And I have been coming to these meetings now for about two and a half years. And um, and over the past two days, when I heard about Greenleaf, I I was absolutely devastated. A lot of issues came up for me, issues of trust, uh, issues of betrayal. And I I just felt exhausted. And so and then I started thinking, well, if I'm feeling like this, what are the residents feeling, the residents of Greenleaf and other public housing residents feeling? And so I would like to encourage this board who has been working on relationships and trust and communication and information sharing to vote no on this because um, in my opinion, the main issue here is respect and trust. And because a lot of the respect and trust is not always there, residents who need to be at the table get left left out of the process. The board is supposed to be representative. It is not representative. It needs to be. And I stand in solidarity with the people of Greenleaf. And I remember about, it must have been Ms. Bishop, about a year or so ago, she came to the meeting and she was, she was, she was complaining that the people who say that they're part of Green, the Greenleaf Stakeholders Committee or the Advisory Board, she didn't even know who they were. They didn't live there. And when I looked it up, there are people from from across town over in northeast who were on, who were representing, and that's not representative. And she even reiterated that today. And so because there are so many questions, if you, if you want to build strong relationships and trust and have the residents trust this process and have this process be a representative process, vote no. Fix it, bring it back to the table properly and make sure that build first happens. It's a part of the Comprehensive Plan. Everybody wants it and it needs to, it needs to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Ethan Perk. Mr. Perk, you have three minutes. Believe you're on mute.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Uh, I'm a longtime resident of DC and I'm here in support of Greenleaf residents. Uh, there are facts about this issue that seem sketchy at best, but other speakers who know those facts better than I do can address those. I'd like to touch on the humanity of what's going on. Uh, DC has a history of telling folks they're doing what's best for them and then actually doing what's best for the tax base of the district. Years ago, I went to a presentation about the redevelopment of Berry Farm. I thought the plan sounded really good. I talked to a gentleman there about how DC was going to move them away for a time, but then they'd all move back to a new Berry Farm along with their community to nice new homes. He looked at me like the naive person I was and said, that's never going to happen. It never has. And we all know how that worked out. If build first is not removed from the Greenleaf plan, moving back to their community is not going to happen for these folks either. We watch the news of Ukraine and bemoan the fact that all those people are losing their homes and communities as they flee the country. Meanwhile, we watch in silence as family by family, communities in DC are dismantled and people are displaced so more taxable income properties can be built and higher taxpayers can move in. It's wrong and we all know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Ronald Collins. Ronald Collins. I'll move on. Uh, Frederica Kramer.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I am Frederica Kramer. I'm ANC sixty vice chair and commissioner for sixty oh five. And along with Commissioner Collins and Hamilton, who I guess will speak after me, uh, I also sit on the DCHA Greenleaf Advisory Group. We met with DCHA and the co-developers of Greenleaf on Monday, this Monday, March seventh, and wrote to you yesterday detailing our concerns. I'll summarize the questions to ensure that you are clear yourselves on the issues before you, before you vote for approval. One, there's clearly confusion about the status of build first. After the meeting with Greenleaf residents, representatives before our own March seventh meeting, it was reported in the press that build first is no longer part of the plan. Excuse me, but Jack Lester of EYA reported at our March seventh meeting that the commitment to build first remains. The resolution to approve the plan today must include a written commitment to the principles of build first. Let's be clear, one move from current to new unit for new Greenleaf, for every Greenleaf resident that wishes to stay in Southwest throughout redevelopment. And no residents be displaced out of Southwest and promised to move back at some later date. Ensuring also that DCHA maintains all of its properties in Southwest before, during and after redevelopment is also part of the package. We and the board need specific documentation on how build first will work, including the precise sequencing of current to prospective units. ANC sixty and the board need to see on one table where each of the households in current units will be moved and when. That commitment is not represented in the slides presented to us. Director Donald is committed to sharing the narrative for the March seventh presentation in time for our presentation to the public, which will take place at Monday's ANC Business Meeting, and we thank her for that. Second, relocation and occupancy rules. Many units need major renovation or are uninhabitable. So seventeen households, we're told, will be moved in the near future from the Greenleaf extension and will ultimately move twice. We understand that. But we also understand the senior building is now only about half occupied. We don't know when and why these units were vacated, where the households are now or whether they will have any rights to return to the new units. We're concerned that other units in Greenleaf may be becoming vacant because of maintenance or other issues and are being permitted to be taken off the, out of the inventory. So the number of residents who may be part of the build first may be vastly diminishing over time. ANC sixty and the board both need to see a written account of the number of current residents, the number of unit vacancies and or being rehabbed, and the number of residents who will be eligible to move to new units through redevelopment. We also don't know the eligibility rules that'll govern the rights of residents to ensure a smooth route back. ANC asks to see written documentation of the rules that will apply to occupying the new units. Three, stakeholders' ability to review and monitor the implementation is critical. Greenleaf resident representatives met separately with DCHA and the advisory group with many stakeholders has not met and may be dissolved. ANC sixty and the community need to know the specific resolution of approval being voted on today and the provisions of the MDA that'll follow, what has been and what will be provided to whom and how DCHA will ensure that the community has effective monitoring and review process throughout going forward. I thank you very much for the time to express our views and you have our letter. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Collins, he was indicating he had some trouble speaking. Are you there, Mr. Ronald Collins?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you. Please proceed. You have three minutes.
I I I won't be long, but I am the ANC Commissioner that represents Greenleaf Gardens. And um, what we stress is that DCHA and the Board of Commissioners must honor the commitment of build first that was made to Greenleaf residents. The ANC sixty, Councilmember Charles Allen, who I understand has written a letter that you should have received today, reinforcing build first and the Southwest community in general. And that guiding principle needs to be included in the resolution of approval and the final revitalization plan. There should be no unwarranted or unwanted displacement of current Greenleaf residents. And we ask that the DCHA Commissioners ensure the continued improvements in the quality of life for Greenleaf residents by initiating the improvement and maintenance and repairs to the Greenleaf Garden units now as the phased-in plan is utilized. We want to maintain the social diversity of the Southwest community and that is paramount. So build first must be included in the resolution or the resolution should be voted down. Thank you for listening and hopefully the members of the Commission have received the letter from ANC sixty and from Councilmember Charles Allen. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Uh, next is Jamie Epstein.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Epstein and I'm a DC resident speaking today on behalf of Ward Three Housing Justice, a grassroots organization of residents from Ward Three and across the city who organize for affordable housing in Ward Three. We're here today to stand in solidarity with Greenleaf residents and in so doing, we echo their calls for the Housing Authority to put build first back on the table as Ms. Bishop, President of the Greenleaf Midrise Resident Council, has said, no ifs, ands or buts. Second, we call on HUD to refuse to remove the Declaration of Trust from the Greenleaf sites, thereby ensuring the basic status of public housing to any redevelopment. And we call on the Housing Authority to cancel the redevelopment contract due to the many questions about procurement irregularities and cronyism. We also call for the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners to respond to the important and piercing questions raised by Chris Williams in his testimony of February eleven, twenty twenty-two about the lack of transparency, execution of a relocation plan without HUD approval, substantial deviation from the request for proposals, allegations of involvement from the former executive director Tyrone Garrett, the existing affordable housing land covenants at Greenleaf and how Greenleaf will make DCHA indefinitely noncompliant with the federal laws on moving to work public housing agencies. We stand at a crossroads today for Greenleaf residents and for the district. Are we going to repeat the pattern of displacement, community destruction and failure to rebuild in a timely manner that we have seen again and again in the past twenty years? From Arthur Capper, Carolsburg to Temple Court to Berry Farm? We have neighbors who have died waiting to be returned to their homes and we stand with Greenleaf residents and say, not here, not today. Protect the Greenleaf community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Renee Bowser. Is Ms. Bowser on the line?
I'm here, yes.
Please proceed. You have three minutes.
Oh, thank you. Um, good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. My name is Renee Bowser. I'm on the DC Grassroots Planning Coalition Steering Committee, a member of Empower DC and a Petworth, longtime Petworth Advisory Neighborhood Commissioner. I'm testifying against the Greenleaf resolution and asking Commissioners to vote no if that resolution does not include a build first policy for the Greenleaf residents. I've examined the history of DC Housing Authority with respect to its decades-long failure to house public housing families in safe, secure, well-maintained housing. More and more district residents are becoming aware of the several decades of public housing redevelopment that have sadly almost totally excluded public housing families from living in the redevelopment properties, starting with Ellen Wilson dwellings and continuing through Arthur Caper Carolsburg, Park Morton and Berry Farm. The build first policy, along with residents' right to return to their homes once redeveloped, was designed to end the massive displacement of Black and Brown residents which DCHA led for decades. A resident of Greenleaf told me that the residents used the DH, DCHA Commissioner meetings and the special meeting she attended to demand over and over again a build first site. The Comprehensive Plan requires racial equity analysis by all district agencies, including DCHA, to make sure the voices of impacted marginalized Black and Brown residents are listened to and their needs implemented. Additionally, the comp plan speaks of supporting a build first strategy in nineteen fourteen point six policy AW dash two point five point three. Implement build first so that Greenleaf families can remain in their neighborhoods with the transportation, library, public schools and other services their families need and deserve. The Comprehensive Plan talks about a whole neighborhood approach that has those services. This is surely a racial equity test that must succeed unlike the DCHA um, practice over many, many decades. And at this point, it seems that DCHA is still failing the test. Vote no on a Greenleaf resolution that does not comply with the needs of Greenleaf residents for build first and right of return. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, that's it for testimony about the resolution.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, moving us forward, I'm going to turn it over for the resolution presentation. I'm going to turn it first over to our executive director. Would you take a moment before we go forward and do an explanation of this whole bill first, please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners and members of the public. And I noted that almost everyone who encouraged the board to vote against this resolution did it on the basis of build first and concerns about displacement. So I want to state for the record that the plan before the board does have a, is a, does include build first. We do not have an extra parcel to build outside of the property, but we have committed to building first on the Greenleaf property. That means no one will be displaced. I've heard displacement and I understand it. I've heard right to return, but no one is, has to return because no one will be displaced. no one will be displaced. And I want to say that very clearly. Um, so I, this is not Park Morton, this is not Berry Farm. People have not been relocated. Um, yes, we have attrition in the senior building. And the agency over the last few years made a decision to keep units vacant so that when that redevelopment occurred, that people could stay within the property and the renovations could occur on site and that people would not have to move. So to the Board of Commissioners, if the concern, as concerns raised by the residents and, and advocates and others is about displacement, lack of build first, those are not relative to or relevant for this resolution. And if you want to build them into the resolution, we're fine with that. If that's what the, what, what people need to see, we are building first on site and no one will be displaced. And then a third comment, um, set of comments were around replacement, where we're committed to a hundred percent replacement, four hundred ninety-three affordable um, public housing ACC units. That is included. Uh, so I do encourage the board to move forward with this plan. I've also heard that residents have waited long enough and they have. And they're, they're waiting in um, less than ideal conditions, greatly less than ideal conditions. We want to move forward. This is still a ten, twelve-year plan. We can get started now within the next two years and have a completely new senior building and a set of new townhouses for residents to move into. And then we can move forward with the next phases. And I'll make one more point, Madam Chair, um, and to the Commissioners. There were a lot of comments about communication, clarity, honesty, and I, I understand that. And we um, are committed to getting that better. There is a Greenleaf Advisory Council. I've heard that it includes people who are not residents who don't even live, live in the community. And we're committed to working with the resident leaders and the stakeholders to um, to revise that, um, that council and to continue having regular meetings so that we're all speaking to the same people and sharing the same information. Um, with that, I encourage the board to approve the resolution, to put in whatever conditions you need to ensure that there's, um, we're doing build first and that there will be no displacement. And I at least want that on the record for everyone who is present and recording this or listening to the recording. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm sure I have a list of questions around. So what we're going to do, we're going to go to our three-minute rounds, each Commissioner, and you can ask your question. I'm going to start with Commissioner Council and then we'll go from there. Uh, Slover, I'm looking at it the way I see it on my screen. So I'll start with you, Commissioner Council, for your three-minute round on.
Thank you. Hearing that the um, I guess the consistent advocate people that's helping and concern about Greenleaf. I have to say it again. It's so strange to see people care about us when we're in a, in ruins or almost getting something taken, but they don't stay with us until nine-one-one or a fire comes and they want to play like they can put it out. Stay with us all the time. Don't come in when we, when things like this happen. But uh, Ms. Bishop, to you, to hear if we change the resolution that there will be no displacement or we're able to build first, would you be in support of the resolution today?
Thank you, Commissioner Council. Commissioner Council, I would like to have it all in black and white because they just keep giving me the words and then turn around and backtrack to do what has been going on so many years that I've seen it go on. Even situations before I became a public housing resident, I've seen this stuff go on. My good trouble is to stop it with all my support and with all my heart and soul. Hear me clearly. Until we get everything in black and white, there should be no moving forward with this resolution of Greenleaf because therefore if it gets turned around, after we have been told that yes, this is going to happen, the people are coming for the leaders. They're not coming for the directors. They're coming for the leaders because we was here in the beginning. So please honor my good trouble and respect that this must stop.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm done with my questions.
Let me just go back to you, Commissioner, I mean, President Bishop. Did you were clear on Director Donald's exact example of what we're talking about, which is not displacement. Are you clear on that? I just want to make sure because you and I've talked.
Ah, we've talked. I heard what Director Donald said. But to know.
Got it. You wanted it right.
Once again, plus, but to know that there has been displacement. However, y'all want to look at it. When you move people out of twelve hundreds into Upper Capes, that was not the plan of doing business the way the leaders have asked for it to be done. Please understand where I'm coming from.
I understand.
Because their knowledge is just as important as the ones that are still here.
I understand. I understand. Thank you. Thank you, President Bishop. We're going to move to our rounds. I'm going to go to you, Commissioner Hoffman. We're doing three-minute rounds for each one of the Commissioners to discuss any questions before we vote. Please proceed. You're muted, Commissioner Hoffman.
I'd like to pass for now and go later.
Got it. Okay, Commissioner Slover.
Thanks. Uh, one clarification in Exhibit A in reference to the replacement units, there's a reference to thirty to eighty percent of area mean income. Is that accurate or is that zero to thirty? I hope this is not my time.
Yes, Lori?
Yes. Um, I would actually like to defer to John Stringfield as far as the, the reference to the AMI.
If someone, if someone on the team can't answer that right quickly, let's get back immediately. Now, I just want to make sure. I know Andrea Powell has a response to that regarding HUD's requirements and how um, that gets written, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
I would just point out that the same thing is on every piece of Exhibit B. It's all the way through the document.
Well, it's Exhibit A and the resolution. But anyway.
Is Andrea the best person to respond to that? You're on mute, Andrea.
Yeah, I, I can respond to that. Um, we'll make sure that we make that correction. It would be from uh, zero to eighty. Uh, because public housing can go up to, to, to eighty, but the replacement units would be mostly uh, from zero to thirty, but there could be um, some units at a, at a higher AMI because some of our families are above thirty percent. So we have to plan accordingly as we go throughout the project to make sure that every uh, family has an opportunity to return to a unit.
It's a big distinction though. It says thirty to eighty, so I'd like to get the zero in there.
Zero.
Okay, we can do it.
We've heard a lot about um, from a lot of people about a lot of issues around Greenleaf. I wanted to sort of set the stage about how, how this engagement was with the board. So in January of twenty nineteen, the board passed Resolution nineteen oh one, which was meant to address the concerns that the agency was hearing from the board about appropriate level of detail needed to make decisions from the board when we were being asked to make decisions about the repositioning of our real estate portfolio. I worked very closely with the then-executive director who crafted detailed list of information and data that we would be provided and able to make, in order to make these, these decisions about our portfolio. The whole purpose of Resolution nineteen oh one was to avoid the very position we find ourselves in today on Greenleaf project, which be, which is being asked to approve a revitalization plan with little to no information with which to base that decision off of, potentially making, you know, recreating mistakes of the past, some concerns we've heard from a number of witnesses. In November of twenty twenty, this board approved by, I think, a five-to-four vote, Resolution twenty twenty, which gave the executive director the right to negotiate with the co-development partner selected through the RFP, the right to negotiate a deal for this valuable piece. That resolution did not give the executive director anything beyond the right to negotiate. At the time, I asked the uh, executive director at the time for the copy of the RFP response. Because based on the information that we were provided, the respondents worked to provide a very detailed financing plan, a financial and, of financial and uh, consideration to DCHA as part of the RFP response. So here we find ourselves sixteen months later, being asked to approve Resolution twenty dash eleven, which is to approve the Greenleaf revitalization plan. The problem is that in sixteen months, not much additional information has been provided for us to make the decision we were being asked. As I stated earlier, Resolution nineteen oh one lays out a very prescribed process by which information will be provided to the board. Some of that information being a financing plan and a deal summary template that we provided to the board. Neither of those items have been provided and the deal template has never actually been created, which is the, the basic information we need to make these decisions. So in looking at resolu, at the, at the specific resolution, I would make a few comments. Again, Resolution nineteen oh one very clearly states in Exhibit A, number three, DCHA shall maintain ownership of the fee interest in real property. Resolution twenty dash eleven reaffirms that commitment in the fourth to last whereas. However, in Exhibit A of the resolution, it calls um, for a fee simple sale of real estate in phase three of Block A or of Block E. Is that the case?
Uh, Commissioner Slover, that would be the homeownership uh, portion of the, the site and it would be uh, fee simple.
But that runs completely counter to what you're saying in the, in the, in the, in the, in the resolution and in Resolution nineteen oh one, which is the agency will maintain ownership.
Well, we do continue to have a capitalized ground lease for all the other portions of the property.
But not the entirety of it. You're going to sell part of the land.
Just homeownership.
Yes or no? So yes or no? You're going to sell part of the land, correct?
Yes, for homeownership.
Okay. Um, in Exhibit A of the resolution, there's a list of items that I assume they're included, uh, that are going to be included as part of the information. The list includes estimated costs for each phase and subsidy assumptions for each of the five planned phases. Did you provide that?
Uh, Commissioner Slover, we provided uh, sources and uses for the first uh, phase of the senior renovation. And um, as we come to you with each phase, we'll provide updated financials at the beginning uh, prior to moving forward with each phase and prior to actual financial closings for each phase. It'll be an updated um, financial summary for each one of those phases.
Exhibit A says that this document has those estimates in it and it doesn't.
It only has it for the, the, the senior renovation, an estimate.
And the senior renovation doesn't, actually, you didn't actually provide a pro forma. You just, you just provided sources and uses.
Commissioner Slover, your three minutes are up. If you want to see if one of your colleagues want to yield you some time.
Let me reside with, let me reside for three minutes because I, when you first started this, I think you started at ten and then you went down to five and now you're down to three.
Always said, it's always been three-minute rounds, but I, I will yield, I will yield you an additional minute because again, I want to get to all of the other Commissioners. Please proceed.
Um, let me see, what's the most important? Um, have you ever provided the board with the uh, with the developers' financial um, offer and um, financial cost estimates that they provided as part of their RFP?
No, we haven't, Commissioner Slover, because it's, it's still an open procurement.
Well, my point is they had to make a subsidy request. They had to make a financial offer. They had to say how much they were going to give us from a land value perspective. There must have been something because the resolution we passed said that the, 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 the criteria used to evaluate the respondents and to pick the winner included these pieces of information. Yet you have not provided that to the board and yet you're asking us to approve a, a redevelopment plan that is basically a concept. It's not an actual plan. It's a concept. There are no cost estimates. There are no subsidy asks. There's no, there's no land consideration. There's nothing about what the developer is going to put into the deal. There's no consideration about what is the, is it a fifty-fifty partnership or is it a twenty-five, seventy-five percent partnership? None of that information is here.
I think all of the information, Commissioner Slover, is in the Exhibit A where we fill the cash flow as well as the developer fees at sixty-five, thirty-five.
How many, how many phases are there in this project?
There are five phases that have been detailed in Exhibit A.
Four of the five phases, cost estimates are not yet available.
Commissioner and staff has explained to you multiple times why they cannot provide, why we cannot provide um, the financials for each phase. And I think other Commissioners who are experienced have chimed in to say why that is appropriate and that we will come back to the board for each phase and the board can scrutinize all of the financials, the pro formas, the sources and uses, all of those documents, and make a decision phase by phase. Right now, we have a first phase that is detailed out, the senior building that we are ready to go. We have given you uh, all of the information that you have requested and some more. And we will come back and do the same thing at each particular phase. And right now, we're asking the board to approve what is in front of them.
It's not, it's not enough information is what I'm telling you. Um, the forty-five million dollar seller takeback in the senior building, how, are we going to get paid on that at all?
Yes, we will be paid and, and uh,
When?
It starts, I believe, in year thirteen or fourteen and, and the performer.
We're going to carry it for fourteen years.
That's in a dated performer. We talked about that.
That are important to understand what our partner is bringing, what the compensation is for this valuable piece of land. What we do time and time and time again is that we put in a hundred million dollar piece of land and get no consideration for it. And that's what I see happening here again. And so to understand what the offer was made that was so compelling that we went with this team and to sixteen months later, still be in the dark on that and still not been, have been told what that compelling offer was and being asked to approve a revitalization plan based on little to no information. I don't understand how we can do it because two years from now, we're asked for the next phase, we won't have a choice. This is the time right now where we say, you know what? We've been at this for sixteen months. We haven't been able to come to a deal. We've extended the time by three months when we said we wouldn't do that. It was a hard stop date. We, we exceeded that. We're still not, we still don't have the information to determine whether we're on the right path or not. We might be, but I don't know because I have no idea what, what the deal is.
Thank you.
Correct me if I have the terms.
John, 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 thank you. Commissioner Slover, we've extended your time. You said these same comments in the brown bag. We are very clear. I'm moving on to the next Commissioner. Commissioner Otis, do you have, uh, you have your three minutes? You have any questions on the resolution?
No.
Commissioner Otis, go right ahead. You're up.
No, I don't. I don't have any questions, actually.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Felcheckio?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, can somebody explain how we use the land value to advance policy objectives?
Sure, Commissioner. Um, I'll, I'll take that question. Um, what we typically do is we like to use our land to, to leverage uh, public and private dollars. And then in case of the first phase of the um, senior renovation, we're actually using that land value uh, to boost uh, the, the, the amount of tax-exempt bonds that we can use uh, to fund the redevelopment of the project. And that's really the, the purpose for uh, the seller note um, and the acquisition.
And that's really the, the purpose for the seller note and the acquisition of the senior building to, to help fund the redevelopment of the senior building.
So just to kind of make that a little simpler, so we use the land value in order to advance the project and improve the housing stock that we have?
That's correct.
Okay. And then homeownership opportunities. Can you talk to us about why that is included and why that's important here?
We actually have a mix of housing types as part of the revitalization plan for Greenleaf. There is a homeownership component in the later phases that will have time to actually work with the residents that can build them up to be in a position to actually purchase some affordable homes. So it gives us some time to plan that out, to make sure that they can build their credit and, and be in position to actually purchase homes when that phase of construction comes along.
Okay. And then my concern about being, seeing one bid is that when you see one bid, you don't have anything to compare it to. This is more a statement than a question, but when you see one bid, you don't have anything to compare it to. What we have before us today seems to be a plan to advance the project and improve conditions for residents. So I guess the question I would put on the end of that statement is, when do we expect that you'll come back to us in order for us to understand the future phases and what will be needed to get them done?
We would actually plan on coming to you later this year as we firm up the, our estimates for the, the senior building to move forward with the financing for that project and, and ex, and submit an application to HUD to move forward with a Rad conversion of that building. We would have closer financial numbers for that project. And then we would come back again prior to a financial closing to give you a full financial picture for the senior project. As subsequent phases come forward, we'll provide a full financial picture for both any subsidy needs on both capital as well as operating subsidy.
So I think you just outlined at least two more votes that we would have to take before we get started. So to say that we're sending you off and that we don't have a chance to see how the project would advance doesn't seem to be exactly accurate.
That is correct. The board will have a full purview of this revitalization plan on a phase by phase basis.
Okay, I want to be mindful of my time too, but I don't know what this for you, Mr. Gold, but then what would happen in terms of community engagement between now and then? How does the community get updates as well?
Yes, Commissioner, as I said, we will revive and update the, the Greenleaf Advisory Council and have regular meetings. We also have newsletters, and we will participate in, in community meetings, ANC meetings as, as invited. But we will have a regular cadence of, of meetings as we do on our development projects. But mindful of some of the comments and concerns expressed here and by the resident leaders, we will, we will update that group and have regular meetings, and I will participate as I did all throughout the fall.
And I forgot to mention this. I appreciate that. I forgot to mention this other observation I made during the brown bag, which is, it seems like there was ANC language that may restrict kind of replacement housing in some developments around the site or around the neighborhood. Not quite clear exactly what that language is, but it seems to have impacted at least one route that this or one plan or one proposal for this project. Can we, can we actually get that language, you know, after this meeting so we understand it? And also see how that is legal, if it seems to be almost discriminating against our residents? We should take a hard look at that.
Yes, sir, we will.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Felcheckio. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes, I would like to put forth an amendment to page two of this. I know in there it reads currently as whereas the goals and objective of the revitalization plan will be achieved through planned phase development, minimize resident moves, and provides a, a plan for zero resident permanent displacement. I would like it to read, to have right below that where it reads something of this sort, and attorneys would have to fix this. But DC, DCHA shall ensure that all residents on the current Greenleaf site will not be displaced, and there will be a built in place or built first site for every existing resident through every phase. And to put that into this resolution so that it is at least codified in the current resolution before it goes forward. And Ms. Bonds, you may have to fix, you may have to fix that language for me, Ms. Bonds. I'm sorry. But that's the, the gist of it.
Yes, we would agree to that and hope that addresses some of the we needed in black and white comments that were made, and if that gets, those get built into the resolution because we are committed, and we have no objection.
Good, thank you.
Do we have to vote on that amendment? Do we have to vote on that amendment now, or do we wait till we vote on the resolution in order to move it forward?
Alethea, do we, can we add that to the resolution today and move it forward, or do we have to wait to vote?
I'll defer to General Counsel.
And then bring it.
Sorry, Ms. Bonds, my apologies.
You do that.
Okay, Lori Bonds, General Counsel, we're amending the resolution now so that you will be voting on that final resolution with the amendment included.
I can't hear.
Commissioner Lee? Sure, three, three minutes.
Ms. Bonds, we would, the, the, the commissioners will want to hear the language and in that resolution, and so you may need a few minutes, but.
Yes, working on it right now.
Okay.
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. While I appreciate the concerns of some of my colleagues with regard to the level of detail that the board has been presented with, I think what we have before us is really a, a plan, an outline of how we're going to get to redeveloping Greenleaf, which includes one for one replacement of some four hundred and ninety some odd public housing units in addition to something like seven hundred additional affordable units. And we'll have, I think the board will have ample opportunity as we move forward as has already been indicated in terms of one approving the master development agreement, which still has to come before us. We would have to approve the Rad application to HUD. And then there would be specific financing plans for each phase. So I think going forward, we'll have ample opportunity to dig into the details of each phase's development to understand how things will be capitalized, understand the expenses, and what is being committed to as we move this project forward. So I'm feeling that I think we have the information, necessary information. This is being done, the resolution is being done in the spirit of, of Resolution nineteen oh one. And with the amendment just proposed, I think it reiterates the commitment to build first and not displacing anyone. So I think with all of that, I'm prepared to move forward and agree to, to the resolution as presented with the amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner Skinner. Commissioner Harris?
I agree with Commissioner Skinner. I have no other questions or comments.
Thank you. I'm going to come back to you, Commissioner. I'm sorry, do we have Commissioner Van Gosery on this call? Is she with us?
No, she isn't.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Hoffman, you asked me to come back to you?
Yes. Do we have people living in Greenleaf who are at eighty percent of average median income? Does anybody know?
I don't know the answer to that.
Andre, do you know that?
No, we'd have to confirm that information.
Because I, I would amend the resolution, all of the exhibits to eliminate zero to eighty unless we have people at eighty and make it zero to fifty. These are replacement units for current residents.
Commissioner, not knowing that information, you may be eliminating a resident that really falls within that guideline. So if you want to put that amendment in, you may be eliminating individuals who fall in the bracket that you're eliminating.
I have never heard of us having anybody at eighty percent of.
I don't want us to make that assumption. I worked on a project where we had families making eighty percent of the average median income living at Berry Farms, so I do not want to make that assumption. And I think we are actually saying that our residents are not in a different position. And I think that what would you, if you make that amendment, you may be eliminating residents who are currently on the property. That's my only, that's my only warning in terms of how you want to move forward, but you have the right to, to add any amendment you would like.
I just don't want us to get to a point where we are building replacement units at eighty percent and moving strangers into it.
I think the last amendment, I hear you. Do you have any other comments? Because I think the last amendment is going to give us. Okay, but just for clarity, the last amendment is going to give us the ability for every resident that's currently on the property to be able to return to the property without displacement. That's what the amendment is going to do. But please proceed with your next question.
Why did Bazudo pull out of the deal at this very late date? Who knows? Anybody?
Yes, we did explain that at Devmod. Andre, you want to give the strength?
No, you didn't.
Any answer?
Sure. Go ahead.
I, I can respond to Commissioner Hoffman. We were alerted by the rest of the development team that Bazudo felt that the economics of the deal had, had changed, and they would prefer no longer to be part of the, the team. It no longer fit their, their model.
And I'd just like to add, that's John Stringfield, that even with Bazudo pulling out, the partners, the remaining partners, EYA and Penrose, have presented to us a, a plan that showed their capabilities and as well as their ability to continue to fill any gaps that potentially would have been made by Bazudo's pulling out.
Why don't you show that to the commissioners? It seems as if, I'm asking for the financial information that EYA and Penrose presented to Mr. Stringfield to prove that they can still do it without Bazudo. There's financing information flying around here everywhere but to this commission.
Can I respond, Director Don?
Please.
Well, I wasn't necessarily speaking to financial information. I was speaking to their operational capacities to perform the, the work.
But Bazudo pulled out because he said the economics of the deal had changed, and it no longer fit their needs. What economics changed?
Those were determined through their own underwriting processes and with their equity partners, and they made a financial decision based on their own business that they, that it was not viable for them. That's between them and their equity team.
And we did not ask the other partners how they were going to meet the financial parts of the deal. Did we, Mr. Stringfield?
We spoke at length in regards to the operational capacity in order for them to be able to move forward with the project.
How is this an open procurement, Ms. Bonds?
Lori Bonds, General Counsel, this is an open procurement because we haven't entered into the master development agreement as of yet. The only thing that we have done is entered into the opportunity to negotiate, but not the master development agreement, which would be the final contract that would close the procurement and move forward with the process.
Well, how does what we're doing today fit into the normal process?
I don't understand what your question about the normal process. What do you mean about a normal process?
Well, it's not the master development agreement, but it's the overall plan for the property. What, do we always have one of those, a development plan without the numbers?
Again, not speaking to the numbers, but again, this is an opportunity to provide a revitalization plan so that again, the commission and the residents will be able to know, have more information as far as commitments to the property and to the community. And so those are steps that are being done now to make sure that everyone is informed and we are being more transparent. That had not occurred previously.
Why are we not waiting until we execute, execute the master development agreement to approve the plan for the entire site?
I would have to defer to Mr. Stringfield and Mr. Gould to speak to again how the process works as far as redevelopment.
And I like to add, my, my name is Andre Gould. I'm the Associate Vice President of Development. The revitalization plan as part of nineteen oh one is going to provide the framework or information that's going to be fed into the MDA. So this is the first step to actually getting to the MDA. All the information that was part of Exhibit A is, is the basic business terms that are actually going to be part of the MDA. So this is that first step.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to table this proposal until we have the master development agreement. I have other questions, though.
To clarify, Andre, and make sure I'm stating it correctly, is my understanding that we need this step before the master development agreement can be negotiated or finalized? Is that correct? So if you table this, we will never have a master development agreement. Am I stating it incorrectly?
That is correct. We've begun negotiations, but we need this step in order to complete the MDA negotiations.
You have any other questions, Commissioner Hoffman?
I do.
Okay, ask your question.
Why can, why can we not approve the plan for the senior building by itself? It is theoretically self contained. The build first is there. We have some numbers, although I just heard that there'll be revised numbers twice more before we finally build. Why do we have to do the whole property when we don't have anything reasonable about the whole deal?
I believe this community is expecting a plan that tells them what the future of Greenleaf is going to be over the next few years. The senior building is one building. If we don't have a full plan, the commitment that residents have been asking for today, the black and white, what this agency is going to be committed to doing, what they can look forward to, how they can make their plans, then they won't have. This is, this is why we do a long term plan and then start so that we, and with a, with a phasing and some level of expectation about what those next phases are. So people can make plans with their own lives. It can hold us accountable.
What if we don't have the money to do phase two or phase three or phase four or phase five? What is our commitment to the community?
Our budgets, as you know, are annual budgets, and so we are planning and forecasting to build this into our budgets going forward. Yes, things can happen with any development plan, but when we, we have laid out a plan and we will use that plan to make our case for our budgets going forward. We still are obligated to support residents. We're still obligated to do renovations and repairs, which we will do, which are also in our budgets. And everything doesn't occur in one year from a budget cycle, but I can't answer what could happen next year. We would just, we are committed, and that's, this is what our long term planning is. We have shown the board our whole portfolio, what the plans are for those that we have plans for. And now we're asking the board to allow us to move forward on this long delayed project.
If you had met the original timeline for the master development agreement, you would have been negotiating it without this plan. I don't believe you need this plan to do the master development agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner Slow, Hoffman. I'm going to call for.
Question. Do we?
Please ask your last question.
Do we have enough units in the current building, current senior building, to accommodate every senior who lives in that building? to accommodate every senior who lives in that building or has been moved out of that building in addition to all the folks you're planning to move in from the additions and from future construction?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to call for any last questions? I take, yes, Commissioner Slover.
I just think that what you've heard from some of the commissioners, this is not in spirit Resolution nineteen oh one, that we again have not been provided the financial information. And everybody keeps saying, well, we'll just wait because we don't have the information. Again, what we don't have is what our partner has committed to the agency. We do not know what that is. And so our leverage is today. As soon as we execute something, we lose our leverage because the developer will then know that we, we have got to proceed. In other words, when we come back with these financing plans later, a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, we really don't have a choice because we have to proceed. And so whatever, again, what we don't know is what we're getting from the other side. So who would enter into a relationship not knowing what, what their partner was committing to the deal? That's what we're being asked to do. We're being asked to approve a plan where we have no idea, zero idea, what our partner has committed to the deal. We know what we're committing. We're giving our land. We're going to provide all these subsidies. We don't know how many subsidies, but we know they're going to be a lot. Again, we don't know what, we don't know the other side. That is no way to enter a deal. And that's why these deals take twenty, thirty years to do is because they're not figured out from the beginning. Things change, yeah, but you got to have a starting. We don't have a starting. We have no idea from where we're starting. And I don't know how we can fulfill our fiduciary obligation not knowing where we are. So I'll have to vote no. And I hope people can see why. And I hope people can realize that that's the appropriate vote right here.
Thank you. Lori, I'm going to ask that you read the amendment as revised, please, and then I'm going to entertain the motion.
Yes, resolution as, as now written, whereas DCHA shall ensure no resident on the site will be displaced from the Greenleaf Housing Community. There will be a build-first opportunity for each household at every phase of the revitalization plan.
Thank you. All right, entertain a motion.
Can you explain how that's even practical? To have a build-first, four hundred ninety-three build-first sites?
Commissioner Slover, we're in the middle of a process. One of the things you've always told me is that you want me to follow the process. We're in the middle of a process. I'm asking, I've already taken questions. I'm now asking for a motion. Again, do I have a motion?
Hold on, Chair Reader. The, the, the resolution doesn't, doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't actually compute. And so I want to understand, we're saying, what I just heard, is there's going to be four hundred ninety-three build-first units available?
No, the, the build-first is for the current residents. There are not four hundred and ninety-three residents currently on site. So we are, the build-first is that for the residents who are, who are at Greenleaf will only have to move after the new units for them are completed. That's the build-first.
How many is that?
Three hundred and, about three hundred and twenty, I believe. I'll double check.
Correct. Three hundred and twenty-three, Director Donald.
It's going to be three hundred and twenty-three redeveloped units.
Yes, in phases. Correct. That is the plan.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Motion.
What are we voting on?
We're voting, we're voting on a resolution as amended.
As amended, not the amendment, but the resolution as amended.
Yes.
Move to table the, the resolution.
Second.
Until after the negotiation of the master development agreement or simultaneously with the master development agreement.
Second.
I'm going to entertain a vote on your move to table, Alethea.
Okay, on the roll call, vote for the move to table. Commissioner Counsel? Yes. Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris? On the move to table?
No.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Gao?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
No. No.
Thank, thank you. Chairwoman Bussie Reader?
No.
Thank you. You have seven no.
Three yes. The move to table is not approved.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a second motion to enter for the original amendment to the resolution. Commissioner Strickland just gave me.
Motion, yeah, motion. Okay, motion as amended, though, as the original, the amendment that I introduced.
I'll second.
Alethea?
Thank you. This is a roll call vote for, for the approval of the resolution as amended. Commissioner Counsel? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Abstain, thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman? Commissioner Hoffman?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Gao?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair Bussie Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. You have seven yes, two no, one abstention. The resolution is approved.
Thank you.
As amended.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment?
We have public comments, yes, for residents and non-residents.
All right, we can begin.
Can I get one question from last month's meeting before we get into this?
Sure, Commissioner Slover.
So at the beginning of the meeting last month, I had asked about Resolution nineteen forty, eleven thirty-three redevelopment. And I followed up with an email to the General Counsel. I followed up with a second email to the General Counsel about whether there's an opinion about whether the authority granted under Resolution nineteen forty still exists because the timelines have expired. And I still haven't gotten that. Is there, is there an opinion on that?
Lori Bonds, General Counsel, I apologize, Commissioner Slover. As you know, I'm just in, in day eight of, of my role. And so I have reviewed the material and you will be receiving that, if not this afternoon, then tomorrow as far as the opinion with regard to nineteen forty.
So you've come up with the opinion then?
It's not come up with an opinion. We have.
You've arrived.
We will provide you an opinion in answer to your questions.
When?
If not this afternoon, then tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alethea, please proceed with the public testimony.
Okay, the first resident we have listed is Tiffany Warren. Ms. Warren, are you on the line? You may have to unmute. It's. Okay. Kiara Richardson? Yes, can you state your name, please?
Tiffany Warren. How everyone is doing today?
Thank you. You have five minutes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Tiffany Warren. Basically, I'm complaining about the housing conditions and my children number especially is bed inside of the housing condition. As I stated, I talked to several people. I'm not going to mention their names, but I have talked to several people about my situation. And I currently live in a four-bedroom in Greenleaf, the townhouses. And also, I'm calling because I have like a lawyer as well that has been working on my case for the last two and a half years since I've been living in Greenleaf. And I have taken pictures of my unit, sent it to my lawyer. And eventually I just got tired of keep reporting things. But recently I did report something that my furnace room, they never came back to fix the solution. Now there's still a bucket inside of my furnace room. They messed up all my walls. Remind you, this supposed to be a remodeled unit. Now it doesn't even look like it been remodeled at all because of walls above it. My six-year-old son, he currently has Down syndrome. He has a big major surgery a couple of years back. I know when I was living in Saffax, he had caulk laid in his system and it was reported to children based on under public housing where I was currently living at. So I'm saying this because at this point, me and my children, we deserve a better living condition because apparently my lawyers, they trying hard to do what they have to do to, you know, accommodate my needs by talking to the resident manager and other people in the property. And also I was like, it's time for me to be in a redevelopment unit. I'm just suggesting, I know some places where they are redevelopment and I think it's a time for change.
Does it conclude your testimony, Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Thank you. Director Donald, are we going to, do we have a response for Ms. Warren or a follow-up date?
Not familiar with Ms. Warren. And certainly we will have, I believe, Nona East is still on the line. If not, we will definitely follow up with her.
Ms. Warren, we have a follow-up process. You will hear from one of the Director Donald's staff members and they will update you within the next seven days. Thank you.
You may.
Uh, next is Kiara Richardson. I don't believe she's on the line. Alicia McKeithen? Is Ms. McKeithen on the line? I'll move on. Ms. Paulette Matthews?
Hello, everybody. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Please proceed.
Okay, good. Hello, everybody. How everybody doing? My name is Paulette Matthews. I'm a native Washingtonian. And after waiting twenty-one years on the DC Housing Authority's waiting list, I finally arrived at Berry Farms. One of my concerns is always is the update in reference to Berry Farms. Someone can give it now or they can give it at the end of when I speak. However, y'all want to do it, you can let me know. Also, the build first. I would like to know what build first actually means to you guys. Anybody can answer it or every board member can answer it. And what is the true definition of build first? So I can get a clear understanding because I guess my definition of it is completely different than yours. Anybody?
Director Donald, would you like to answer this? I have one of your staff persons on.
Well, I do understand that there are some different interpretations. Ours is that that we will build the replacement unit before someone has to move when we're doing a redevelopment. We are, one of our commissioners asked us earlier to make sure that we come up with a written definition for that and that we codify it and understand from many of the comments in the meetings that we need to do that. So we'd appreciate it if you would give us a chance to do that. But in this case, this is what we mean. There will be no displacement, that people can stay where they are. And that before it's time for them to move, they will move into, their unit will, will have been built or renovated and they will move one time.
Okay, because that's what I kind of thought and that's what we often had talked about when we was talking about the redevelopment of Berry Farms. And no matter how long we talk, what we protested in reference to about it, how many meetings we attended or whatever the case may be, it's still manifested as itself. It was like we were in meetings where people were there listening. And someone had said before me, people who didn't even live in Berry Farms, people who were not subjected to all the neglect, whether it was done intentionally or whatever, to make the process of this history of how they do redevelopment that affects people mentally, physically, and emotionally. And you can hear the stories each and every day about the rats and this and that, the mold, the mildew, the bumpy walls, the maintenance people not doing what they should do or cheap materials being used. And constantly y'all amend something to go ahead and pass it and have this agenda to keep going forward when the nightmare of it is going, is being, it's happening to the residents like myself each and every day. And it's almost to me like the system or the board or whatever, y'all seem to have blinders on. It's like you have a plan to try to make it better, but in the process of it all, y'all are making it worse for the individuals who have to adjust to this. Mind me now, we are very good adjusters, but the fact that we have to go through some of these and then we move into places that's worse than the ones where we are. And when it comes to talking about safety, I don't think that nobody is really safe anywhere nowadays. But we talk about all of these cameras and this, that, and the other, and those things don't seem to help as we move along through this process. What I see is just more confusion. Miscommunication is crazy. How you're treated when you go to the rental office is ridiculous. Getting work done is, is terrifying. How, I've been put off for months, years, because I came here in two thousand and nineteen, from Berry Farms to where I live at now, in the townhouses, in Eldery Park. And I'm trying to tell you, it's been a headache from my ADA requests to just getting little simple things done, how things are being put off from month to month to month, on top of my son being murdered, having to deal with the Metropolitan Police and all of that. And it all becomes very, very, very stressful. And I sit here and I hear how y'all doing these things, like y'all see what's going, going on. And I, I think that y'all should actually stop passing all of this stuff and to off the capes is completely done. God rest Ms. Deborah Fraser. So Berry Farms, it's like the process, like we were talking even in those meetings for Berry Farms. I went through every one of them, you know, from the Wilson Building to the DC Housing Authority before we came to talking on the telephone or, or Zooming. This does not make any sense. Y'all move us out, but don't have enough money and have to try to go find the money to do stuff. And we got to do all of this in different phases and all of that. But if y'all could have got all of us out at once, because we did what we did, we were still there, there were still people that was resisting and standing ground because we knew the nightmare. The history has been the history and it hasn't gotten any better. And it's two thousand and twenty-two. And, and it's affecting lives where you say you're trying to do better. It's not making it better for us. Trust me, it's not. Build first, building something first and then you move into something new and whatever. And you can move into new stuff nowadays being done with certain people. And like she said, the lady just spoke. She sees things bubbling and all of that type of stuff. But the fact is to move from, if we were to move from Berry Farms to a unit that was already built first, we wouldn't see all these emotional and mental problems that are being caused. And some people, because of the process, they're not going to even be able to come back. They're going to be dead. So therefore, the process of how it's being done needs to be changed. And hopefully, I just had to run from the Housing Authority, excuse me, y'all went through what y'all went through. We have to sit here, we're the residents that's being affected by it. And we have to listen to what y'all talked about in the roundbag meeting. And you want to give me five minutes? But I'm saying what I'm saying. And Ms. Donaldson, the last word, Donald, for you is that when we asked about the papers for Berry Farms and you said you was going to send it and I let two months go, nothing came. I told you, you said you wasn't aware of it. You said something back out. But the thing was, it was supposed to have been a piece of paper where the signatures were signed that was saying that the residents could come back. Because the resolution number, nobody should have to refer to a resolution number. They should be able to refer to a piece of paper that was given because at the beginning, the middle, and the end of the day, y'all said that we were living these conditions. We had to. y'all said that we were living these conditions, we had to shut it down for you to come back. Not that we had to fight to come back, and I'm done.
Thank you. Alithia, you can go to the next testimony.
Um, the next person is Ms. Shontae Hi. Ms. Hi, you have five minutes.
Hello, I asked a question about, uh, Berry Farms, uh, update. Berry Farms.
Ms. Matthews, will you please give me a call so I'll make sure I understand the information we provided you was not what you wanted. So you can tell me exactly what you need. Be happy to talk with you and make sure that we give you exactly what you need.
Thank you, Director Donald. Ms. Hi?
Thank you. Joe eight-seven, and through your beginning, and though your beginning was small, your latter days will be very great. Hello again, I'm Ms. Shontae Hi, President of the Council at Park Morton. I'm here to speak and let DCHA and all the attendees know, um, who were not aware that I filmed my documentary called Motherhood, directed by Mr. Christopher Kinsel, that can be found on YouTube. As of late last night, my documentary short has been selected for its third Black Documentary Film Festival. The first was the two thousand and twenty-one Indianapolis Black Documentary Film Festival. The second was this two thousand and twenty-two Denton Black Film Festival, where it was also nominated as a finalist against some tight comp- uh, competition uh, for the People's Choice Award. And as of March eighth, it has been selected for the two thousand and twenty-two Ottawa Black Film Festival in Ottawa, Canada. My story of the atrocities, housing conditions, and dangers that DCHA allowed my family and residents to reside in is being noticed. I will be doing a follow up to this documentary to tell about the current intimidation, bullying, as well as other tactics DCHA is using to try to force me out of my home. I had a chance to meet with HUD to show them all of the illegal eviction notices for myself, the ninety day notices given to residents, and so much, much more. I said on my Twitter once before that I have so much damaging evident, evidence against DCHA. I find it interesting how the quote unquote obstacle has always found ways to make a pathway to freedom, yet DCHA has always been the wall that stood in the path, thus being the obstacle themselves, yet wanting to assert blame on the residents. I created the Equity, the Park Morton Equity Plan, the PMEP, given the two thousand and twenty-one Vision Award by the Committee of a Hundred on, uh, on the federal city. And DCHA blocks equity for generational residents along with council members and demped operated by John Foul Chekio, a mayor appointee. DCHA says it helps residents become self-sufficient, although they penalize residents for even trying. Equity homeownership through the PMEP is the only path to true freedom because it puts the residents first, which DCHA has never, ever, in its entirety, ever done. Being, stop being the wall in the way of progress. Embrace change. You seem to do so seamlessly when a new executive director, new commissioners join, or a new chair of the board has to take over. Be like that fateful day on June twelfth, nineteen eighty-seven, when the former late President Ronald Reagan stood at the Brandenburg Gate in West Berlin and said, "Mr. Gorbachev, tear down this wall." Proverbs thirty-one, eight, nine. Open your mouth for the mute, for the rights of all who are destitute. Open your mouth, judge righteously, defend the rights of the poor and needy. For those, for any residents of the properties that care to speak out, let me know. I will be there to film your story and support you. I'm Ms. Shontae Hi, the President of the Council at Park Morton.
Thank you, Ms. Hi.
Thank you. Thank you, President Hi.
Uh, next is Ms. Rosa Burbridge. Ms. Burbridge, are you on the line? I don't see her name. I'll move on. Ms. Linda Brown. Linda Brown.
Excuse me, Ms. Linda Brown had a family emergency. That's why she wasn't here, she's not here to speak. But just to interrate that she's with and back the Green Leaf leaderships and thank everyone who spoke up, we getting in some more good trouble. Let's do this and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Uh, Ms. Pat Malloy.
Good afternoon, everyone. And after I give my whatever, I would like a answer, please. Um, my name is Patricia Malloy. I'm Lincoln Heights Resident Council President. Today, I'm here to speak on misinformed information regarding replacement units off the property for Lincoln Heights and Richardson dwellings, the Strand residency and Providence Place. We were able, there was so much confusion regarding whose responsibility to do X, Y, and Z. But this weekend, uh, twenty-five of us residents was able to go to the Strand to see the units. My question is, we as residents of Lincoln Heights did not have the privilege of choosing our own unit. We were told DC Housing Authority chose our units, which are one and two bedrooms. When new community was established, when you move into an offsite, you were not supposed to be able to tell what units was low rent and what units was tax credit. The Strand has leased up majority of their tax credit units. We as residents did not have the opportunity to see none of the twenty-eight units. We do not have the privilege of having the balconies. The, the footage of the unit, Andre Goel, is not what was promised to us. In the living room, you could put one chair, one chair and a coffee table. That's how small the living room is. We have seniors who's been approved to go in the building that have oxygen tank. Where are the oxygen tanks going? I need to know who is the director or supervisor of the relocation team? I would like to have a webex meeting with residents of Lincoln Heights with Director Donald, Director of Relocation, regarding who was making the decisions for Lincoln Heights. We should have been able to see every unit, every eighty-seven units in that, in that building. We have two other offsites, four eight hundred and fifty-two oh one haze. The stress that we are going through, the policy and procedure is not the same. I am inviting each commissioner, even the director, you all should go see the Strand. We are being treated as though we are cattle being branded. And I am asking, I asked Brittany Holloway, there is so much confusion behind this relocation mess, cuz it's a mess. This is where the media needs to be. Properties you're talking about bill first, the replacement housing is terrible. Not only that, from my understanding, Brittany Holloway has sent flyers to every property trying to get residents to move into the Strand and Providence Place. Treat us right in Lincoln Heights and Richardson, and you wouldn't have that problem. Not only that, to Mr. Slover and to Ms. Hoffman. We have, in Lincoln Heights, we have fourteen families that make too much money to move into the Strand and to Providence Place. But yet, the thing was to make the residents self-sufficient. These residents became self-sufficient. And what happened was, they are not able to move because they make too much money. Now tell me, what is the purpose of all of this? Too much stuff is going on, Commissioners and Director Donald. To be honest with you, I don't believe you know half of what's going on. Because if you did, it would not be allowed. Commissioners, you don't know half of what's going on. We are being branded for offsite that's unacceptable. I'm telling you. Now, my, my last point, thank you Brenda Donald for, Ms. uh, Eve. She did come to Lincoln Heights, and she really is a down-to-earth person. Second of all, our manager has been gone for three months. Please remove his voice from the answering machine. Please, remove his voice from the answering machine. My concern today is, Commissioners, you all are really making wrong decisions. But you need to come look at these units at the Strand to see how Lincoln Heights residents are being treated? Because I'm letting you all know, I am calling Sam Ford. I'm gonna form a press conference in front of four hundred and fifty street. Then we're gonna go to the Strand to see it's not right. Tax credit people have the beautiful, in our, we're supposed to have microwave. There's not one darn microwave in none of the replacement units of Lincoln Heights. I am tired. I'm tired of begging. I'm tired of asking. John Foul Chekio, where are you? Demped is not doing what they are supposed to do. It is a new community, it's a mess. Housing you think you can do any better? You're not. I'm telling you. I'm telling you, and I'm begging you Commissioners, you make decisions on everything else. Go see the replacement houses for Lincoln Heights at the Strand. And tell me, why did DCHA choose the units for Lincoln Heights resident? I want an answer now. I don't want you to put me off and say you're gonna get back to me. I'm gonna be quiet so you can tell me.
Ms. Malloy, I don't know about the relocation process, but I will meet you over at the Strand next week and you can, we can walk through it. And I'll bring whoever it is, um, that you want to have in the meeting.
I want Bill Slover, who I saw, I want Ms. Hoffman, I want Mr. Counsel.
Okay, well, the Commissioner, you need to bring your- on my staff that-
Maybe you need to bring your legal team because-
Yes, I, we will, we will do that. Yes, ma'am.
This is totally ridiculous. I want you to tell me, who is the director of relocation? Who is the director of development? You need to bring them with you and bring a darn tape measure.
Okay.
I'm tired of you all lying to me. Right now, I've had enough. I would do a sit-in before I continue to let you all treat us this way. I'm telling you, I would do a sit-in. You could have me locked up or whatever, but I would do a sit-in if I have to bring every child in Lincoln Heights with me. Because the way we're being treated, cattle are being treated better than us. I want to talk to HUD. I want to tell them that. We're being treated like darn cattle.
Director Donald, is there anybody on your staff that could, uh, address that?
That can answer specifically about the relocation process?
I want Andre Goel to tell another lack of need that you've been telling.
Relocation. Let me pull the team together. Ms. Malloy, we will come out there, I will find out who all is involved. And we will come out there and you will walk us through and we'll, we'll try to understand the issues. But right now, I don't know.
Donald, could you make sure I'm included in the process?
I don't need to walk you through. You need to go see for yourself.
I, yes, ma'am, we're gonna come. Any Commissioners who want to come, I don't, that's fine. I'm gonna bring the staff who's responsible so we can understand the process and understand choices that have been made. Um, but if you all want to come with us or you want to come separately, that's fine. But we will be coming out next week.
So there's, there's nobody that can answer?
Not sure exactly what the questions are about who and why and when. No, there's no one here now that can do that.
She asked for us, Commissioner Slover, she asked for, she says she want them, us to come out immediately so we can see the relocation ourselves. And that's exactly what the director's gonna do. Alithia, thank you.
Also, ask, is, I asked for who is the director or supervisor of relocation team?
Relocation team is under the Housing Choice Voucher Program. There's a small relocation team, um, they report up through Ms. Myers. I don't know who the immediate supervisor is. I will get all the information so that we can have a, an informed response. But I'm not gonna do it on the fly.
But you also gonna tell me who made the decision, who chose the rep, the, who chose the units for Lincoln Heights? Our other two, uh, four eight hundred and nine in Halliburton, DCHA didn't choose the unit. The residents was able to choose, go through the building and choose their own unit. Why all of a sudden, the other two developments, DCHA steps in?
I don't-
These gonna be voucher units.
Okay.
See, that's the problem. You all don't want to give enough time to hear a person out.
No, I just want to get the facts. Ms. Malloy, I don't know the answer and I don't think I have all the people here who can answer. We don't even know all of, all of the information.
Andre Goel is here. He know the process when we did four eight hundred and fifty-two oh one haze. He know the process for that. That's what's wrong with this agency now.
Okay.
Everybody want to be quiet all of a sudden.
No, ma'am, we just want to get the facts.
You're saying that-
I'm telling you, enough is enough.
They're saying that right now, there's nobody on the phone can answer.
That is correct. I don't have enough information to even understand exact what the history is, what the process is, what the rules are. We will get that and we will respond.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Donald. Alithia, you can call the next witness, please.
Say Chairman Buzzard Reader, that's what I, you can cut me off or whatever.
Don't you, wait a minute. President Malloy, I thought that's, I thought we answered it the way you wanted us to respond.
No, you have not answered what I want to, you know, you have not answered me. I hate when people do, you know what?
I'm not doing that.
We're wasting our time coming to speak.
No, you're not. No, you're not. No, you're not, Ms. Malloy.
So we need to organize and get rid of everybody with this commission.
Now, I listened to you, you're not listening to me. You asked two specific questions. Director Donald said she want to be able to give you accurate information. She don't want to answer on the fly. You accept, accepted that answer. We're gonna give you the right information that you want. What we don't want to do is give you wrong information on this call and then you hold us accountable to something that's not true. We're trying to give you the right information. I'm not dismissing you at all. We are very clear-
There's somebody on this line that can answer the call, but you all won't let that person answer the call. That's what I'm saying.
Who, who do you think is on the line that can answer you? Who do you think is on the line that can answer you, Commissioner? President Malloy, who do you think is on the line that can answer?
Whatever you all want to do, and I'm gonna do what I'm gonna do. It is really inhumane. It is really inhumane as to what you all are doing. Continue to do what you're doing. God is gonna take care of it all, believe me. Continue to do what you're doing. You're not doing us a service. I don't think you're doing any residential service. But when you start putting us in the ground behind the decisions you all make, I hope you are happy because what goes around comes around. And when it come around, it's not gonna be too pretty. So all of you have a good day. I'm getting ready to log out before I pass out.
Alithia, you can proceed.
Uh, Ms. Coris Lowry. Ms. Lowry. You may have to unmute. Yes, we hear you. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Lowry, we hear you. We hear you. You can proceed.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, this is Ms. Lowry again, this month's board. So I have a question. I have a letter here. First, Ms. Donald, Ms. Board, whoever on this line. I just sent y'all a bunch of pi- pictures where I've been living with Mr. Master Splinter. Does anybody know who Master Splinter is? I know y'all do cuz everybody seen Ninja Turtles with their kids. Uh, I sent y'all really gross pictures of Master Splinter in my apartment, then kept me up for two weeks. Had me crying and nervous wreck. I can deal with mice. I can't live with rats. I've been dealing with this too long. But right now, let's address this letter that I got. Twelve sixteen twenty-one. Mandatory notice transfer and request to transfer a unit or request to transfer to a other unit. Call us low. Call us low, this lady's base, this lady's issue to you is, is because your name has come to a transfer waiting list. Your transfer is based on, hear me, your transfer is based on, hear me, serious conditions existing in your home that pose a threat to your life, health, and safety. Why am I still here? Signed by Ms. Donald. I want to ask the whole board, you, yes, you offered me a unit, ma'am, that did not go with my disability. I have my doctor records that says that I cannot do any more than five steps. You put me in a unit that has 12 steps. The health department calls to find out, why am I still here? Because it's affecting my health. Someone talks to them and tells them, well, she can go around back. Oh, I can go around back, but then she asks, well, what about the stairs in the place? The 12 stairs in the place that she can't do on a day to day basis. I would like to ask the board, I would like to ask the person who signed this paper, which is Ms. Deborah Donalds. What are we doing now, Ms. Donalds? Because guess what it says? It says that my place that I'm living in is unsafe, it's unhealthy. And it causes, you know, it is threat, threatening to my life. Are we gonna wait till I'm literally dead so my, my children can sue? Are we gonna literally wait till I'm in the hospital? What are we gonna do about me getting out of here? Now I'm dealing with rats, have two hoes, I've been dealing mice come, the maintenance people, pet people come every three months in this building. It's the mold, if I moved here in 2017 and when we moved in here, hear me out, when we moved in here, the lady on third floor had mold outside of her wall, covered in her pockets and all her leather goods. You put her in a hotel, I'm in the basement, here we are five years later, I'm dealing with this for two years. I'm telling you, I proved my point, it is not visible mold. The test says from Salute to Test, to Test, says that it is unlivable conditions to be in here. You gave me an air filter, I'm telling you, the air filter aggravated the situation. I was in here throwing up and puking, shitting all over myself, my grandbaby in here throwing up and puking. I need to know what is the next move, ma'am? It's over a month, you said I have 33 days to vacate since this letter and I'm still here, living in unhealthy conditions. I just want to know what's gonna be next. I call every month, y'all know I call every month, the same situation, I should not have to call every month with the same situation. You said that I'm being unreasonable and I'm being disagreeable, I'm just trying to tell you, I'm just trying to get in a place that's gonna be healthy, that I can live, that I can breathe. That I, I'm now on an inhaler, ma'am, I have never been on an inhaler in my life. I promise you, this is not gonna keep going down like this. Please, I'm asking for some simple help. I call every month, I ask the whole board, the whole board never says anything. Ms. Donalds, I dress you, you call me, I don't want to keep saying what you keep telling me on the phone. But I'm just letting you know, what's, what's the answer now? What do you have to say to me now? And ma'am, the one lady who does the call, I just want to commend you, you are awesome, I don't remember your name, you're awesome how you hold things together. And I want to commend you about that. But I'd like to know, what are we gonna do about my situation now? Hello?
I'm sorry, Ms. Lowry, I'm, I'm looking at the update that the staff has, uh, shared with us. Director Donald, do you want to respond or do you want me to look at how we responded already?
And I hope everybody looked at that nasty picture of that rat that they just got in my apartment, that's been in here causing me a nervous wreck that I got to go and talk to somebody. But yes, Ms. Lowry, what?
It is my understanding that Ms. Lowry has been offered several units that meet, um, her needs according to our.
No, ma'am, let me stop you there, ma'am, you have broke, tried to break, break up my family in the last unit that you gave me did not meet my disability. You keep coming on here saying the same thing over and over and over. It is not right, you do not break my family up, you done made me poor, why I got to have my birth and support animals? You done made me poor, why I got to have my children here in not high age? And approved everything that you asked me to and I'm still here, ma'am, I'm still here. So I have not been disagreeable and turned it down your unit, your unit don't meet my disability, now what you got to say?
So, Ms. Lowry, if I, if I can just interject, just so that the board, the commissioners are clear. We, you were offered two units and you're, you're saying those two units are not adequate, is that what you're saying?
Ma'am, yes, I am, I'm saying they were not adequate. You, first of all, you want to, the units you tried to get me and you want to break my family up. Then, uh, no, yes, all I'm head says, they were not compatible to my disability. Please understand that, yes, ma'am, I would not keep calling you every month if this was not true, I promise you. I want to stop calling you, I don't want to be bothered with this anymore, I just want to go in and live.
Okay.
And then you tell me you're not gonna offer me a voucher because this letter says it's unhealthy conditions. You tell me I can't get a voucher because for whatever reason, I can't get a voucher, even though this is emergency, it's okay, I don't have to get a voucher. But I, even the places that I called that I found, you won't even help me get those. I actually would put me in a place that's, that where I live at, everything that you've offered me has been worse than where I live now. If you are raising the standard of living for the residents in housing, which you keep saying, it mean not listening to, I can't hear you. New places, new this, new that. And, um, even down to the, the, um, the classes that I'm wanting to take, guess what, I can't take them because I'm too busy going back and forth to the doctor and dealing with other shit. So I done missed the classes that you done put out, so it's not like I don't want to go, but I, I can't resolve this situation to have a, a comfortable living situation where my nerves are not on track. That I gotta watch my mouth or that I can't breathe. I, I just need to know, what is my other option? You haven't come back with any other options, you keep telling me I've turned them down, yes, ma'am, I've turned them down, I told you that several times, I've turned them down, now I'm asking you what's next?
We'll refer you back to the ADA team and see if there are any other units that.
You said that last month, you said that last month, no one reached out to me, no one called me. No one called me, Ms. Donald, you said I will have, you said, go back and listen to your recording, because I quote everything that you tell me. And your, your call said that I will have them reach out to you, I have not heard from, not one person. And here we are another month again, so now, did they call me or did you know that they called me or did they tell you that they called me? Did I get a letter, I got nothing.
So, let me interject, I'm trying to move this thing forward. Ms. Lowry, only the, what I see here is that based on your accommodations, and I think this should be a conversation that we take offline unless you want it to.
We always keep trying to take it offline like the lady said, but then when we take it offline, I come back.
I was giving you that option. What I'm saying to you is, the agency has offered you according to what we have as your reasonable accommodations. The agency has offered you units that you will not accept. So now the only other thing is to offer you another unit that's based on your accommodations. If they've offered you two that you've denied, I'm trying to get you to a place that is a better situation and you're saying you don't want to go to those.
No, ma'am, you keep telling me. You keep telling me you offered me the units that you offered me, can you please go there, the first one you offered me, I want to put my mother there. And you wanted to move my son across the hall, you wanted to get me a one bedroom, him a one bedroom, that's not how this works. They live with me, okay? Then you wanted to put us over in a place where, um, uh, uh, I forgot the other place, um, that, um, they were all on 14th street and I was somewhere else. Yes, I turned that down too, because we're not together. Then you offered me a place that, um, what's the other place with the stairs? Yes, I turned that down too, uh, what are you saying? Even you, and I told you, I said, if you're gonna break my family up, give me two bedrooms, two baths, I can keep one with me and give the other two bedrooms and a bath. No, you act like you don't have none of those in place either. I know you have those in place, I've called all around town, northwest, northeast, everywhere I live, upper northeast, lower northeast, Nantahallenborough, where I used to live at, all new places, all two bedroom, two baths. So if you wanted to break my, my family up, give us a decent enough place and put us all in the same damn building. Otherwise, give me my three bedroom or a four bedroom and two baths, no stairs. I don't think, that was, that was quite simple. But you keep telling me you don't have two, you, you saying, once again, one, one thing, one more thing, you keep saying you don't even have two bedroom, two baths. And every time I go online, that's all I see is two bedroom, two baths everywhere. So if you wanted to break my family up, I, I'm saying that I'm willing to meet you halfway. If you're gonna break my family up, put us in somewhere decent, put us together, give me two bedroom, two baths, I keep one of them with me, give the other one two bedrooms and one bath. Otherwise, give me a three bedroom, what is on my disability, what is on my, on my application, a three bedroom, two baths, no stairs. In the, I'm, I live in a beautiful apartment right now, it's gorgeous, I do not even want to give it up. But because of the living conditions and I can't, I'm damn near not breathing, I have to leave. The apartment is beautiful, it looks like I live in two separate apartments, the way that it's set up, it's beautiful. So for me to go anywhere that's not just as beautiful, not just as decent, doesn't have a locked door, will be unacceptable, that's all I'm telling you, that's it.
Okay, so you love where you are, but you have a, you need, is an extermination issue?
No, ma'am, what they, I have two tests from Salute where I had to prove that I'm dealing with mold and moisture in the air. It's no visible mold and no, um, so the test said that, um, it came back twice, because we had it done twice. That every time that they come in and try to fix it, they're just really aggravating the situation because it's in the wall behind the plaster. And what I'm telling you, if we moved in in 2017 and the young lady on the third floor had outside, literally I had the pictures, she showed it to me. And they put it in a hotel for three weeks to get them to treat the mold. But I'm trying to tell you, behind the walls, the whole building needs to be condemned, but I have nothing to do with that, I can only be concerned about me. I'm in the basement and I'm suffering, I'm suffering, Salute has done the test, I was sent, everybody on the board, the, the test that it says that I shouldn't be in here. That either you bring me an air filter in, the air filters came in and guess what, it aggravated the situation. We all were in here throwing up, even the last time when they came and took the rug off and everything, we all got sick in here, everybody got sick. Everybody got sick and I'm telling them you're not fixing the problem, what's the problem, it's in the walls. And so because it's in the walls, then that means it's a major problem, meaning that I need to leave. Because you're not gonna tear down and gut the building out, like they said, they gutted it out and fixed it, but they didn't, we found out that they didn't, they put a Band-Aid on and moved us in here. And now I have been dealing with flood and mold and moisture. I have all my pictures, it started over, it leaked, let me tell you, this leak started two years ago. I kept telling them, my, on my side, it stinks. My, 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 um, my closet, my bedroom, it was, the smell was horrible, I found the mold inside my closet. The leak was coming from the community room, this is what I want to tell you. They don't know how long the leak was leaking.
So Ms. Lowry, Ms. Lowry, again, I, I'm gonna, one of my commissioners want to make a point of reference. I'm gonna allow that to happen, but this issue that you're having, we have to move, we cannot resolve this right now. You're gonna have to give us an opportunity to, to at least.
I know, I know.
At least give you a call back, but I hear, I wanted you to get an opportunity, like I want all of you all residents to express your concerns. But it can't be resolved right here in this time. It, it has, this is gonna require us to take this offline, but I'm gonna yield to Commissioner Slover, who has a point. And then you're gonna have to trust that we're gonna have to have this conversation offline, we can't resolve this right now. Commissioner Slover, please proceed.
I've seen this happen a bunch of times on the board that I hear all these, all this discussion, but then reading in the notes, the, the agency seems to be representing that. Ms. Lowry, uh, is gonna submit a new reasonable accommodation request, which would lead me to. Hold on, which would lead me to believe.
Okay.
Lead me to believe that there isn't an active reasonable accommodation request on file, which means nothing can be happening. And so I don't understand how we can continue to get into these situations where our clients and the agency don't seem to be on the same page and so.
Chairwoman, if you'd like me to answer that for Mr. Slover. There is a current reasonable accommodation request with a transfer approval. The current reasonable accommodation.
There are four reasonable, ma'am, there are four reasonable accommodations, you, somebody lied on me and said that I forged papers and I had to do another one. I asked my lawyer, why should I have to do another reasonable accommodations when I have done it three damn times? So I've done it four times and now you're telling me I got to do another one? I am upset, do you understand, I found the paperwork, ma'am, I found the paperwork.
Ms. Lowry, you're not listening to her, that's not what she said. She didn't say that, let her finish, let her finish, please, Ms. Lowry, please, Ms. Joseph.
Approved, there is an approved accommodation request. The approved accommodation request does not say anything about stairs. So the last unit that we offered, which would, should have been an acceptable unit and was an, the available unit with the space constraints. And that met all of the other reasonable accommodation requests, was rejected by Ms. Lowry because she says that she does not, she cannot do the stairs. We are away, what my understanding from her legal counsel is that they are submitting a new request with documentation to say that she also cannot do the stairs. That would then trigger yet another.
You're lying, you're lying, you're lying, you're lying.
Can I ask whether the apartment was offered?
One, one second, Ms. Lowry, Ms. Lowry, can, can I just ask you to please allow Ms. Joseph just to finish? And then I'm gonna give it to Commissioner Slover and we're gonna take this offline. Please, Ms. Lowry, just please let her finish her statement, please, Ms. Joseph.
Commissioner Slover, the most recent offer I believe was made at the end of January. And what we, what we received from Ms. Lowry's attorneys is that she was resubmitting a new reasonable accommodation request. To my knowledge, we have not received that, I have not been asked to approve it as I'm now approving a reasonable accommodation.
You said I forged the other one, because you said I forged the other one, the original one, I put in three, starting 2021. Now, we gonna, either you gonna lie on me or you gonna tell the truth, honey.
Okay, Ms. Lowry, can we just, I, I, I'm just trying to get to a conclusion here, so it sounds to me like having been through this a few times, that no matter what happened prior to this moment. To, to get an apartment that's going to, um, meet your accommodations, you're going to need to, whether you want to do it or not, you're gonna need to, uh, put this new application in, get that process going. So that's what I'm asking you to do and, uh, hopefully we can get that done and, and find you a place. I didn't mean to, if you want to hear, but let's, let's try to get that done, so thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Slover. We have, uh, eight more individuals to testify. Please, Alithia.
The next is Chris Otten. Mr. Otten.
Hello Commissioners, can you hear me?
As we hear you, you have five minutes, please proceed.
Okay, um. So I just wanted to put it on the record, uh, I'm a public housing resident myself, um. But, you know, and I've testified before, um. Reparations comes in many forms. Could be a blank check, it could be true care about real people who have been oppressed for hundreds of years. The people in public housing deserve so much better. So much better, given the realities of the structural racism in this country. And here in the District of Columbia, which was until recently. What we're seeing with new communities, which Quadell, the Quadell Report has pointed out, is a complete failure to serve the people of this city who deserve the highest compliment. It is telling to see John Faltchickio on this board. Because this isn't about people, this is about, about land deals and the privatization of our, our public property. People like Shonta High have simply asked, as generational black DC residents and families living on this land. That if you're gonna privatize the land and give it away to some out of town developer, that they.
Yep.
Come back to homeownership opportunities and real generational equity. What we're seeing and what you're hearing today is people like Sean and people like Ms. Bishop and others. Who are crying out because they're seeing, they're witnessing from Hope Six on, you could call it whatever you will, the privatization of public land. That results in them just being simply moved about as potted plants, I've heard that stated before. With just a simple guarantee that maybe they'll get to come back, it's not even a guarantee, maybe they'll get to come back to a unit that they already have. So imagine the disruption in people's lives when they have networks built throughout their communities over, over generations. When suddenly they get a 30 or 60 they noticed to leave their community. Park Morton is a great example. Most people who live in Ward One. Park Morton is a great example. Most people who live in Ward One are gone out of Ward One, including out of the city. Are they compensated for this? I'm not seeing it. I'm seeing the opposite. I'm seeing harassment. I'm seeing being put in units that are also equally unhealthy. I'm seeing a lot of issues here. This is the opposite of reparations. This is the opposite of racial equity. A one-for-one replacement here in the year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one? And we're talking about, oh, oh, maybe we'll just build what already exists when we have a thirty thousand person waiting list? Hello? What, what am I missing here? It should be one for five. We need to make up and repair the harms of the past, not just maintain the status quo oppression. And people's lives are at stake. Moving elders out of their communities and out of their networks where families and clinicians and professional networks exist now and sending them to Ward Nine from Ward One while they wait maybe ten years to come back back to a unit that's smaller, that's, you know, maybe built sloppily? This is not acceptable. And I just want to put this on the record, um, that the privatization plans here are, is old news. This is a Republican concept brought up and built up under Bush and Trump. We're beyond this, folks. We need to invest in our public land, invest in public housing, invest in the people and actually compensate folks for this disruption to their lives. Not land deal giveaways and privatization, Mr. Falcicchio. This is hurting Black families. I'm here to stand up alongside them as a privileged white person in this city. To say enough is enough. I'm with them. And I want to see this commission do better. Thank you.
Thank you. And did we get to a resolution for Ms. Laurie? Because I got cut off.
Ms. Laurie, you and I, we agreed that we're gonna take this offline because when Ms. Joseph told you about the units, you said that that wasn't acceptable.
Um, yeah, we can, we can discuss it and, um, I'm not gonna.
Resolve right now, Ms. Laurie. There's no way, there's no way we can resolve.
All right. I know we can't resolve, but, but I'm, I'm just asking once again. Uh, nobody called me last month. Maybe I can get a call from somebody this month, and thank you for the person who just spoke. Okay, thank you.
I guarantee you, you will. Thank you. Alithia?
We're moving on to our non-residents now. Uh, the first is, uh, Ms. Joy Johnson. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Please proceed. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I'm here as a, uh, Realtor that represented a landlord, um, in a, in a transaction in December. And I wanted to just get some feedback to the, um, DC Housing Authority process by which, uh, the landlord accepted a client that is, was utilizing the Housing Choice Voucher. And it took the landlord, um, and she was supposed to be paid December first. She was not paid until January the eleventh. And the reason, because the paperwork is quite extensive and the rental specialists would not allow us to move forward without properly completing the paperwork. Um, the reason for that error was because of fat fingering. Pretty much someone mistyped the wrong account information. And this caused, um, a lot of heartache for my client because, of course, the tenant was in the property and for two months, for almost two months, um, she was not paid, um, on time. And a part of, uh, you know, some of the issues that we're dealing with in terms of housing is trying to convey to property owners that, um, they need, they need not to cause any issues in related, in relation to, um, uh, discrimination, discriminatory practices, um, and making sure that everyone has an opportunity to, to rent that, that qualifies. And so this slight delay, uh, or simple delay, I should say, um, just caused an enormous rift where I had to email, um, several supervisors, Ms. Pompey. Um, I emailed the rental specialist, Mr. Queen, and even had to speak with Ms., uh, Janie Libby. Uh, we finally figured out what the issue was, but the reason that I wanted to speak to you all was because, um, because of something so simple and because the paperwork is quite extensive. If we could have it where the landlord inputs their account information or certain pertinent information into your portal, I think that would, that would have eliminated the situation that we dealt with. Um, there was a lot of going back and forth in terms of people telling me to follow up. In a couple of days, we did that, but it took for us to, it took for me to have to constantly keep reaching out to finally figure out, I guess through their accounting department, that the check was sent. It was returned because of the incorrect account information. So I'm saying all this to say in closing, um, as a real estate professional, um, that services the Washington DC area and, um, assists clients that are landlords as well as, um, tenants, for something so simple, it, it creates a lot of challenge. And so, um, I know that the landlord didn't appreciate that experience. And so I just wanted to make a suggestion if we can maybe, because the portal seems to be, um, quite advanced, if we can maybe make opportunities where those individuals can put those types of details in themselves so that, um, it can reduce an opportunity for error. I'm done with my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. We will be able to follow up on that suggestion and see if that's something that's feasible. Uh, would you please look back, um, to Ms. Johnson?
Thank you.
Uh, next is Sarah Ann Nester. Ms. Nester, I don't see that name. Uh, I'll move on. Harper Jones. I see Harper Jones is on the line. You may have to unmute yourself. Okay, I'll move on. Um, is it Laris Massey?
Oh, this is Ms. Jones. I'm here.
Yes, okay, Ms. Jones, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for, um, allowing me to speak today. The purpose of me wanting to participate in this meeting is to share my family's recent experience with DCHA. Last year, in the year twenty twenty-one, my mother-in-law, Jackie Walton, and my sister-in-law Carmen Walton Lewis, who have lived in Ward Four for over fifty years.
Ms. Laurie, we need you to mute your line. Ms. Laurie, you have to mute your line. Please proceed.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll start where I think I left off. Last year, uh, my mother-in-law, Ms. Jackie Walton, and my sister-in-law, who have lived in Ward Four for over fifty years, unfortunately became ill and they became ill at the same time. My mother-in-law was suffering with dementia and my sister-in-law with breast cancer. Due to my mother-in-law not being able to manage the home anymore because she started falling down the steps and my sister-in-law needing breast surgery and chemotherapy, we decided as a family, it would be best to rent out the family home for a while and move them into a one-level apartment. Well, we rented out the home to a DCA, DCHA tenant who moved into the house February first, twenty twenty-one. And it has been all downhill since that time. During this short period of time, just over twelve months, our family has been put through the wringer. Right after moving into the unit, the tenant, who, um, was told it was a no-pet home due to the health problem of the family, suddenly had five emotional support animals, including a pit bull and a ferret. The tenant refuses to pay the water bill, which is almost three thousand dollars. There are constant calls for repairs. There are repairs for the toilets, there are rodents. The place is just a, a real mess. Now, mind you, the home was completely renovated before the tenant moved in. We have spent thousands of dollars in legal fees defending ourselves from frivolous losses brought on by the client, including DCRA and the Office of Human Rights. DCHA says they are looking for good rental properties for their clients, but based on our experience, there is no support for landlords. Our experience has simply been a nightmare. I've been emailing DCHA all year asking for help. My emails generally go unanswered. Occasionally, when they are answered, the employee generally say they will look at it and get back to me, and I never hear from them again. My mother-in-law actually passed away last November, about three months ago. We believe the stress of all of this caused her early death. My sister-in-law's health is in jeopardy and she is standing out of the hospital. Our family is worried about her health and perhaps her untimely death. My sister-in-law filed paperwork to move back into, to move back into the property. We are asking, pleading, begging DHA for help in this manner. Thank you for your time and attention.
Yeah, ma'am, I think Laquita is working on this one, Ms. Myers. We are familiar, um, and unfortunately, there are a lot of limits and restrictions about what we can do regarding a tenant, um, who refuses to leave and doesn't pay rent. But we're looking into our, our part on this.
Um, well, no offense, but this is what I hear all the time. They're looking into it, they're looking into it, and I never hear back. No one calls me back. No one responds back. Emails go unanswered. It's like, I don't know what.
That certainly is our responsibility. Ms. Myers, are you working on this?
Yes, yes, I am. Ms. Jones, is it okay that I ask her for a number here? Because I don't see it in.
You can follow up because it should be on the email information. So let's, um, make sure that Ms. Myers follows up tomorrow to, um, let you know the status of the situation and what we're able to do.
Now, who is Ms. Myers? This name is not familiar to me.
Ms. Myers is the, um, is the Senior Vice President over the Housing Choice Voucher Program. She's just came, joined us in December, so you've been dealing with this for over a year. She's fairly new, but she's the, um, the head of that department.
Okay, I look forward to speaking with her. She will call me tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am.
Is, is that what? I'm sorry?
Yes, I can call you tomorrow.
Okay, that would be wonderful. You have my phone number?
We do have your information on the sign-up sheet. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. I look forward to speaking with you.
Next is, uh, Daniel De Palago. Daniel, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I have a couple of quick questions. Um, one is, and, and I alluded to this point when I testified about the resolution, but I am very concerned that there is, um, a, a good amount of Berry Farm residents, uh, living at Greenleaf that will potentially be affected by the redevelopment. As, you know, the system, um, eats itself and residents are faced with, you know, these redevelopments twice, three times over, what happens with their right of return to the original property they were, um, displaced from? So, you know, if there is a Berry Farm resident currently at Greenleaf and they have to go through that redevelopment, where is their right, uh, to return? So that's one question. Um, I know there is a Right of Return Committee Working Group being put together. Um, I hope that that can be dealt with, uh, within that group. I'll also express, uh, some concern that there, that working group will include, um, you know, landlords and developers. I don't think that that's, uh, the right move. I just wanted to put that on the record. Um, and I've got two more questions. Um, I, one more, one more question, um, actually. A, as we were speaking, a resident reached out to me who, who lives at Greenleaf, and she's sent me some pictures of, um, rats in her unit. Um, it seems that her unit has become infested with rats, not, not mice, but actual rats. Aside from calling, you know, um, filling out a ticket for maintenance, what options, who can she reach out to, to be able to, uh, get some, some treatment, some abatement uh, of the rodents? It appears that there is a big hole under her, um, the, the front step to get into her unit where potentially there is a burrow or something happening.
Information on that, um, resident, if she hasn't reported already, of course, she can immediately report to her, her property manager and or put in, um, a work order. That just allows us to track it. But, um, if you have, if someone brings something to your attention that's health and safety, please immediately elevate it so that we can respond, um, right away.
I'll say that to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Berry Farmer's right to return, who's living on, living in Greenleaf. It's my understanding Berry Farm right to return is anyone who was at Berry Farm, uh, from twenty thirteen on. Um, so that individual would have the right to return to Berry Farm whenever a Berry Farm unit is built and available. If that's what that person, that family chooses, if they want to stay at Greenleaf, then they're part of the Greenleaf redevelopment built first, no displacement, and they can stay there. So they have a lot of options.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll, I'll just, um, thank you for that. And, you know, a, as several people have seen, we, we'd love to see that in writing somewhere and codified somewhere, just so folks know in our.
Well, the Berry Farm is our, yeah, the new community's right to return is in writing. And now this resolution about no displacement is, was amended and is in writing. So I'm not sure what else is needed, but, um, happy to follow.
I think just something that spells out the rights of people who are, you know, who will potentially be in, in properties that.
Right, so they would be covered under the, their original property, right? So now they have options. So they would have the right to go back to Berry Farm whenever the Berry Farm unit is, is available. Um, but they also have the right to stay if they want to stay in Greenleaf.
No, I understand that, and, but I think, once again, I mean, something that, that clearly spells that out because, you know, you would have to, to see both of those things. So something, some language that explains when residents are affected by redevelopments twice, three times over, um, what their clear rights are. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Suprema Doughty. Ms. Doughty on the line. I did not see her on our list of participants. Um, and lastly, Teresa Day. Ms. Day? I do see her listed. You may have to unmute. Uh, Madam Chair, if Ms. Day is unable to, oh, there she is. Okay. Ms. Day, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Teresa Day. And I'm partially deaf, so please bear with me if you need to say something to me. I hope I can get some feedback regarding my situation. My question is, once my application for a Housing Choice Voucher is completed and is confirmed by the staff at the ECOH, uh, um, to be completed, what are the next steps toward me actually getting a voucher? Since January the twenty-fourth, we had not received any further communication from the ECOH staff. Until yesterday, March the eighth, when in response to calls and emailed inquiries about the status of my application, one of the staff wrote back saying only that she will check to see if there is anything additional needed for me and let me know. I have been trying for more than a year to complete this process due to imminent homelessness. However, the communication between me and the ECOH staff has been in fits and starts. Our calls, emails, and questions are not answered for weeks or months, and it has been very stressful for me. I would hope that the staff could be more responsive. For instance, in November of twenty twenty-one, the staff sent a zero income statement to us for one of my family members to complete. We had emailed back to them a question to clarify what is considered income as we did not want to do anything wrong. The staff. The staff did not reply. After over eight weeks of repeated attempts through calls and emails, the staff did get back to us to clarify this issue. Also in November, due to their miscalculation of income of a family member, we were initially deemed ineligible. However, we were also invited by staff member of ECOH to schedule an interview to discuss the income issue. We replied within the two-week timely manner to get a, to get an appointment, but we received no response for two months. By the middle of January, the ECOH staff concluded that we were indeed within the income guidelines for the Housing Choice Voucher Program and therefore eligible. But today, more than six weeks after that, I still don't have a voucher. Please advise me regarding next, next steps. Thank you.
Latwida?
Yes, so thank you, Ms. Day, um, for your inquiry. I just reached out to my staff to see exactly what's going on with your status, to see if it's a local program or a federal program. I get the information and definitely have someone give you a call back tomorrow. If they do not call you back tomorrow, please give me a call. Um, and then afterward I'll be able to respond and to see exactly what's going on with your application.
Thank you. Please tell me your name again?
Latwida Smyers, S M Y E R S.
My S M E D Y S?
S M Y E R S.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay. And please, I have your phone number, please?
Sure. Check in. Give me one second. I have to figure it out. One second. My phone number is two zero two five, five, eight, zero, four, eight, three, two, four, eight, three, two.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that was the last on our, uh, testimony list.
Thank you, Alethea. This actually concludes our DCHA Board of Commissioners meeting held today on March the ninth. The time is now three thirty.
No, I had a question. I had a question. It's Paul F. Matthews. Sorry to be rude. But I had a question in the beginning of my statement when I testified and it was an update for Berry Farms.
Do you have a response, Director Donna? What is the question, Ms. Matthews? What is your?
The question was, what are the updates with Berry Farms? That was the first thing I said out of my mouth when I proceeded with my testimony.
Understood. Do we have an additional update, Director?
No additional updates. We are moving to close on Berry Farm. The, as, as you know, it has been, um, completely, um, um, excavated and there, we will be moving to work on the senior building first, hoping to close and have a groundbreaking early this summer. Um, then the senior building will take eighteen to twenty-four months.
Thank you, Director Donna. Ms. Matthews, that is the update that we have for you today. Again, thank you all for your time. We appreciate you. This meeting is concluded three fifty-nine PM. Um, my name again is Dionne Bussey Reader, the Chair of the DCHA Housing Authority. Uh, our next meeting will be held April the thirteenth and that meeting will also be virtual. Thank you all and have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.